All right, welcome everybody. It's six o'clock. Welcome to our Tuesday, June 7th City Council meeting. We'll be starting with a committee workshop discussion on Trailhead. And guess what? As of June 1st, I don't have to read the disclaimer about being remote or in person. So we are officially required to be in person with a remote option, though with all the improvements we've had, we are going to continue having the remote option for our for our guests. And when people are away for things like training, like Kelsey is, she can zoom in from somewhere else. So welcome, everybody. So we're going to do a quick roll call here. Make sure we've got everyone. Councilmember Cargill.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Foyer.
Your.
Councilmember Salberg.
Your.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
All right, all present and accounted for. So we will go ahead and jump right into our Trailhead discussion. And I guess Lisa is up.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to point out that we have members of our Trailhead team with us tonight. We have got Jonathan Miller, Carly Aggie, Keith Dixon. I believe Steve Roth is on here, though I don't quite see him yet. And Joey Tuohy, who is going to be kicking off the presentation. So Joey, if you want to take it away and share your screen.
Okay, now we'll get started. You guys can see that okay?
We can.
Okay, well, good evening, and thank you for taking the time to meet with us regarding the Liberty Lake Trailhead Golf Course Clubhouse. Tonight, we're going to be recapping the design options we presented to the public via the open house we held, farmer's market and an online survey. We'll then be reviewing the public feedback we received from that, providing you guys with a schedule update, and then concluding with a request of council for a decision on how to proceed. So we'll be showing you guys the same information we presented to the public. So the same same informations, and you can see what they saw. So this is the site plan, which you guys have seen before. The public had not. So we kind of wanted to give them an idea of the overall project scope. Obviously, the parking lot project is already approved and underway, and this shows how the building sits on the site. This is what we're calling the budget option, which you've seen before. This meets the $6.4 million budget given to us by council. This was the same building design you guys saw last time we presented. We did show a couple of alternates here that were product discussion, and we kind of took those and developed those out into a second option to kind of show what that would look like and what that would cost. So that brings us to the expanded option. And this brings in those alternates and kind of defines what they look like. This expands the flex space to seat 100 people. It provides additional bathroom fixtures in the bathrooms. An additional sim bay for the pro shop. It adds a hallway that connects all three program functions, which is really a key to this design. All three program features interact with each other, and this allows them to all be interconnected by an indoor hallway, previously, you know, restaurant serving anything in the sim bays would have to go outside. Same with the pro shop trying to get in the flex space. This also provides additional deck area near the flex space for more seating outdoors, an additional overhead door. This option includes a enclosed service enclosure for the trash, oil, you know, various restaurant features. The benefit of that is, you know, prevent smells or odors or visual sight lines of that kind of stuff. It needs to be part of the restaurant from the people that will be using the deck patio, driving range, etc. This option also provides more glazing on the facade of the building. Provides more daylight, you know, arguably provide the better aesthetic to the building. One key to this design that I think is really nice is that it brings the event space, which is the community center out front. Kind of makes it the forefront of the building, the first thing you see. So overall, you know, both designs are similar, but the expanded option definitely brings quite a bit more for roughly $600,000 more. This this we just showed in the basement. It's the same for both options, you know, services for the function golf cart storage, pro shop storage, flex storage, and then the various infrastructure required items for the building, as well as additional space for the restaurant. So after we presented all this information to the public, we presented them with, oh, I'm sorry. So we also recap kind of the benefit of the simulator base. You know, this tidbit here on return on investment, which you guys have seen, kind of showing how, you know, the payback and successive simulator facilities in the vicinity, as well as all the other features that it provides beyond golf for various people in the community. So after we presented this, we gave them this voting form where they could choose either the budget option, the expanded option, and then gave them the opportunity to write down any comments they might have regarding their thoughts or feelings on what was presented. So we took all that information and we compiled it into this form here. So we had a total of 253 votes. We had 154 comments. And you can see here that 80% of the people chose the expanded option. And to recap, the three different venues were the public open house, the farmer's market pit, and then the online survey. 38 people voted for the budget option. And then we had 12 people that either didn't want either project built or did not respond to a vote option. We took all the comments and we, any comment that repeated more than three times, we categorized. So the oddball comments or ones that weren't specific to a certain part of the building, we didn't really calculate. But we took all the recurring comments, ones that were specific to something about the building, and we categorized them. And the number one one was that Liberty Lake is growing, need to build bigger for the future. The need for a larger flex space for community events. And then the design, you know, looks good, like the plan, the expanded option, the desire for simulators or the benefit of year round revenue, providing a feature for non golfers. The other main comment was big bill, build big now while we can, or costs are only going up. Expanded option will bring more business revenue. We had 12 people that just were not about the project. We can't afford it going to recession, don't want the debt, etc. 10 people thought the larger deck was important. Larger bathrooms, during the open house, I had more people come up to me and talk about needing larger bathrooms than any other thing on the building, which I thought was interesting. So this kind of recaps the feedback we got from the public through three different forms that we presented. And with that information, here we are scheduled. We're currently here at June 7. As I mentioned, we've begun site construction. We've had the open house. We've already approved the GMP for the site. We plan on meeting with you guys again. This is tentative August 2nd to kind of give you an update on where we're at with design, how things are going. And here we have September 5th, begin abatement and existing demo of existing building. This is tentative, obviously, because with the schedule, the way it is and kind of some slides we've had, we plan on presenting the final GMP for the building on September 6. So this was our original goal for this, but this obviously will be dependent on the decision you make on the 6. There's kind of a recap on the schedule, and that will be updated as we move forward and have more information. So with the information presented, we're requesting a decision to either maintain the current budget and use the budget option design or increase the budget and proceed with the expanded option.
Joey, if I may, if I may, I'd like to just underscore for city council. So our original kind of target date for the final GMP was August 16. We're still going to try and meet that date, but the timeline is really, really tight for both design and permitting side of it. So if we slip it all in design, we don't have any given the amount of development that we have going on right now. We just really, we really don't have any latitude to squeeze that permitting in in a shorter timeframe. So this is the reason why we're presenting as September 6 for the final GMP. We will still do our best to try and meet that August 16 date. One of the things I do want to underscore, though, is that the design team cannot move forward until we have direction from council regarding either the budget option or the expanded option. We need that information to move forward with the with the design.
Is there anything else you guys want to add before we open up for discussion?
I guess one last thing to add is the expanded option is kind of where we started with the building. And with the way the market is, you know, market prices are going crazy and inflation basically forced us to cut the building down to the budget option we're presenting. So that is why we're here asking, do you want the trimmed down version? Or do you want to increase the budget slightly based on market conditions to create the project we originally hoped for?
Okay. All right. So with no further comments, guess from our team, we'll go ahead and open up for discussion with the council. Don't everybody jump at once. Go ahead and just raise your hand if you'd like to comment first. Okay, we go to Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask a few questions. I kind of feel like we've been put into a box here because the design, the expanded design, which was presented to the community, the council didn't get a chance to see that expanded design. The council did not say we want a $6.9 million expanded design. We talked at the last meeting about a $6.4 million budget. The question that council member Foyer asked at that time is if we increase it based on the designs that we had at the last meeting, how much extra would we be talking? And the response at that time was about $250,000. So I'm trying to figure out the difference between the answer to council member Sol, or excuse me, council member Foyer's point at the last meeting question at the last meeting and where we are now with the 6.9.
So I would ask about to kind of chime in on this. We did, we did add the service enclosure. Things came about this. The trash, where you put the trash in the site has always been a kind of a nuisance to this project. There's no really good place to put it. So one of the things was adding this place to give it a somewhere to be without causing site or odor issues. The other thing that wasn't really thought of at the time was as you increase the flex space, the bathrooms naturally have to get bigger, and you also need more storage for the additional tables and chairs. And adding this hallway really, it seemed like a good design decision to really kind of connect the spaces. So I think the 250,000 was kind of thrown out of the time without understanding the ramifications of what all the expanded options would entail to make it work functionally.
It also, just real quick for clarification, it also didn't include the costs of the simulator equipment, which this does now, correct?
Correct.
And I guess I, hi, Carly Aggie with Bouton Construction. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I would just add this, this also includes, which Scott didn't include in the last conversation, Washington State sales tax and soft costs associated. So this is a complete number, not just a construction cost.
So the numbers that we were given last time wasn't accounting for those two items?
Correct. The the city, the owner, you guys carry the tip, the soft costs in Washington State sales tax typically. So but the project budget is all inclusive.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I guess my other question to Chris is if we start demolition on September 6, how much business, Chris, are you going to lose in that late autumn time period when people might be wanting to go out and golf? It would it be better, I guess, my my, let me clarify, would it be better if we did it started like October 6? Is that a busy time for you?
I, you know, clearly, the later we go, the better. But when you get to September, as soon as the kids go back to school is when every golf course starts to slow down significantly. So June, July, August is our bread and butter of of revenue. So yes, it would help to go a little further back, but I don't believe that it would offset the revenue that we get compared to what it might cost to delay the project. I of course don't have exact numbers, but just me thinking in all of the revenue that I've seen in the last 10, 11 years is once we get to September, it goes down significantly, and I don't think it'll be a huge impact. Plus, the other thing would be the restaurant at that time would be gone. So one of our biggest impacts to this project would be the parking that we have logistics that we have right now. But when we get to September, we won't have the restaurant taking over most of the parking lot. So I don't feel that it would be a huge impact.
If I may, Councilmember Cargill, I'd also like to point out that as part of the mini GMP, we included temporary facilities for the pro shop. So the golf course will remain open. Obviously, less than ideal circumstances on to your point, but it will remain open.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody? Councilmember Dunn.
Hey, I'm enthusiastic regarding the expanded option specifically for the time that I was able to join and listen in on community conversation during the open house. I offered my compliments, of course, to the entire design and the staff that had produced the materials. Um, one thing I recount from our prior meeting was kind of a resounding thud over minimum services related to restroom size. Could you explore a little bit how the expanded option distinct is distinct from the budget option with respect to those services in the restroom?
Yeah. And actually, on that note, based, this was presented at the public forum, and since that we took the information we got and we've managed to make a larger women's restroom with four fixtures without increasing square foot of the building. So the bathrooms in the current design are actually larger than what you're seeing here. The budget option only has two fixtures in each bathroom. And based on all the feedback we got, we were, we managed to squeeze in a four fixture women's bathroom and a the expand option provides three fixtures in the men's bathroom as well. So that, and that helps because, you know, the restaurant will be sharing bathrooms as well as the pro shop and the golfers.
I just really appreciate those details, and I think it's more fitting to the nature of the design. Thanks.
Thank you.
Right. Any other? Councilmember Salberg.
Thank you. Well, first of all, big kudos also to the Community Engagement Commission. I've been out at the farmer's market with the mayor and others the last few weeks, and whether they come by and ask, or whether they get grabbed and asked, we have had hundreds, if not more, of interactions with people, and not all of them were recorded either. From the gist of the conversations that I've heard while we're answering other questions, the citizens of Liberty Lake and Vicinity are excited about the expanded option, and it's very similar. I would have to say probably close to 80%, like we had on the surveys of people that want the expanded option. There have been very few people who have come and said, we can't afford this. There have been virtually no negatives. One of the things that was important, I think, for the discussions that we had with the citizens was that there are, I think, a total of 14 different options in that in the the bays. And the one question that I would have is, thank you, yeah, the one, the one before. If we have kids in there playing dodgeball or basketball or or whatever soccer, will the rate be variable for those? Because I, golfers will spend 100 bucks an hour. But I don't think that it that that should be passed on at that at that amount to the kids if they're in there for that long.
Yeah, that really good, the business, business plan for it at that point. That's probably not something we can answer now, but it's something we will will obviously need to discuss when we're setting rates and things like that.
Is who's who's going to set the rates?
We will. City Council.
Yeah, we'll get recommendations, and then we'll, it'll come to you guys for discussion.
Okay.
And approval.
That's all.
Great, thanks. All right, next. Councilmember Kurtz.
I don't necessarily have a question. I just wanted to say thank you to the people that gave input in all the in all the different ways that they could. And then for the really nice summary that was visually easy to read as well. It's it's very nice to actually have some feedback and some perspective on even if it's just a taste of what the community is interested in, to actually have some data behind it. I think it really helps inform decisions here. So thank you, everybody.
Councilmember Van Orman, Mayor Pro Tim, either.
I, I think for me, it's going to be probably later on when we ask the financial issues because we still have a public works project that is foremost on my mind. How are we going to be able to take care of both with the expanded version? I, having public input was phenomenal. It's great that you see everything that comes forward, and I was there at the farmer's market kind of getting feel too. But I just don't know that we can afford to do both.
So Kyle has prepared some information. You want to jump ahead to that, Kyle? Go through.
So what we can do to start with, Todd, can you pull up the difference between the financing between the budget option and the expanded option? And we can walk council and the public through that first. And so I know we've gone through various different iterations of what, you know, what we're looking for, what we think we can afford, kind of going forward. And once Todd pulls that up, we'll dive into that a little bit. One of the attractive things that that our head golf pro Chris is able to show is that not only can with the expanded option, can we fund the simulator equipment, but we're adding to that as well. And so we can show that if we're funding the expanded option over a 20 year lifespan, these annual payments are roughly an additional 40,000.
A year.
A year. And we can show that that added simulator can bring in that amount or more on a very, very conservative basis. And so that was one of the attractive things for me as a finance person to show that. So we have all these extra amenities, but one of these things is an extra simulator that can bring in all this additional revenue that is going to be put directly back towards these annual payments. And so if this thing takes off like every other simulator shop has, obviously, we're going to be putting a lot more back into these annual payments as our revenue increases with golf operations. And so you can see with the current budget up top, we have a current budget of 6.4 million, we'd be financing 5.4 million of that. Let's remember that 1 million is going to be put towards the building. Another million is going to be put towards eventual driving range improvements. And so with the expanded budget, we're increasing roughly 600,000. You can see how that affects each term and annual payment and subsequent debt service for the life of those notes. And you can see, you know, I, I have been, I think, probably champion in the 20 year option. I think that really fits what we need. We don't need to go past any. I don't think we need to go past that because we're doing, we're paying additional. I don't think we can need to go less than that because we do have the flexibility of a 10 year call on a 20 year. No, if we are outpacing expectations, we're going to beat the 15 year mark anyways. And so that's the goal of this is really to take these additional revenue markers. Obviously, you know, rates, we're going to increase rates at the driving range. We're going to increase rates on the golf course. We will see additional revenue coming in across the board, not just simulators that will all go back to pay this note. And so so that was, that's kind of what what drove me to to the section, the second option, that expanded option is the potential for us to add additional revenue to pay back this note sooner.
So Kyle, did you want to go through the other seven slides?
Let's do that. Yeah, that sounds great. And so that second attachment, Todd, highlights our capital funds, and I'm leaving general fund out of it because there's too much that goes in and out of that for us to really capture capital expenses within that fund. And so our other major capital funds that are really all inclusive, we have our real estate excise tax, we have two separate funds. And so you can levy a first quarter of 1% of real, real sales within the city, and then you can also levy an additional second quarter percent. So Liberty Lake has done that from the outset. And so we have these funds in place for essentially, you know, public infrastructure improvements. And so you can see this is our REIT one balance sheet. You know, we started 2022 with $870,000. We're anticipating collecting $600,000 in each of these funds. So REIT one and REIT two, you'll see the sales tax income is identical because they always will be. Different projects get different reimbursements based on what is eligible with lift and what we get from maybe state and federal matches on any projects that we do. And so what you'll see for 2022 is the first in the green is our income. Obviously, we have Kramer Parkway reconstruction identified in the REIT one capital fund. And so we're working on that. We have the Mission Avenue sidewalks and any project development that comes along. That's a placeholder for anything that may come up throughout the year that we didn't anticipate that we can put some design dollars towards. We have not allocated any of that funding yet. And so what you can see is money in, money out, we're anticipating a 2022 ending balance, $950,000 that will carry into next year. Based on the conversations we've had with the planning department, there is absolutely no reason to believe that REIT is going to experience any diminish in sales and tax collections. And so that's, it is our belief very strongly that we will continue to outpace expectations in those collections of those tax dollars. And so we have identified a few different items for REIT one, and they are interchangeable, and it really ebbs and flows with balances in each fund. And so as you can see, once we get to REIT two, you know, we thought we had a good handle on the public works yard. And so obviously, everybody knows the nature of the construction atmosphere that we're in. That came over, and we'll dive into that a little bit later. But as you can see, what we've already identified is, you know, Country Vista, Appleway intersection, annual street maintenance allocation. I have included a very, very top line annual trailhead bond repayment in REIT one. The likelihood of this being $400,000 is is almost zero. It's probably going to be closer to two, maybe 300,000 because we are putting that additional revenue that we're going to see from golf course operations towards the bond payments first. But I do want to be fair to the process to show you, here's what it's going to look like if we have the maximum amount coming out of REIT one every year. And then obviously, you know, we have every year, we're going to have some sort of sidewalk and pathway capital maintenance as well. And so you can see, we're looking at roughly, you know, 700,000 towards the end of next year being available going forward. And and I will expand on these a lot because REIT dollars are really match dollars too. So we want to be able to use these dollars to leverage bigger projects coming down the pipe. Transportation Improvement Board has been a phenomenal state agency to work with, and we have to, we put down a very minimal match, and they fund the vast majority of our of our project when they are approved. And so we thought going into this year, Kramer Parkway Reconstruction was going to get funded, and it didn't. And so that was a shock. And so we do not anticipate getting those denials like that going forward, especially with bipartisan infrastructure plan or all of these federal dollars, dollars flowing into infrastructure and state projects. And so Todd, if you can go to the next slide.
Oh, quick, Kyle, before you, I know you and I talked about it earlier. If you can just speak to, you don't have any payment in 2022 for Trailhead Bond Payment. I thought you might want to address that.
Absolutely. Yeah. So so when we finalize the bond payment later on this, the sale of the bond later on. Oh, absolutely. Yeah. So so when we finalize the bond payment later on this, the the sale of the bond later on this summer, we will have a a minor payment. So when you. So when we go out for the 20 year amortization schedule and we look at each annual payment, we will have a payment. In 2022, it's going to be much smaller than our average payment. It's going to be not quite half. I would say it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty to two hundred and eighty thousand. Once all the financing gets settled and that. So we're putting golf course operations excess funds towards that payment. So REIT will not see any of that first thing.
Thank you.
Next slide, please talk. And we might get a little bit into this later because we will need to have a discussion on what we're going to do with the public works yard. And so you can see how these balances ebb and flow because, you know, we didn't have two point one million dollars going in to REIT one. At the beginning of this year. And so we had, we had identified the public works yard. As a REIT two capital fund expenditure. And so going in, we had legacy ridge traffic signal, which we're almost completed with as well. And so what I have included in here are is what I am, I guess, putting forth to council for consideration. And so that bold. General Fund ARPA REIT one assistance for the public works yard is the assistance that we're requesting. From each one of these separate funds and it'd be three hundred thousand total. From one of them or or a combination of three, if council so chooses, to get us to the finish line to complete. Or to award the public works contract. And so based on what we have heard from the contractors, lead times tell us that this is not going to be completed until well into 2023 anyways. But we do need to account for all possible expenditures when the contract is awarded. So this gets us to the finish line. As of the end of the day today, we have five million dollars in reserves in general fund. At the end of the year, we're going to have between seven and eight million dollars. Once our lift reimbursements from the Kramer overpass. Are funded by the county. And so this gives you a snapshot of how we can get there. So we do have excess money. In the general fund that we can put towards this ARPA, we can have that discussion at a later time. Possibly REIT one assistance. If council so chooses as well, but this gets us to the finish line. To award the public works yard contract later today. And as you can see, we will purposely in 2023. Shy away from putting all of our identified capital expenditures that we have on our capital facilities plan in REIT two. So we allow it to build that back up. And 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 so I don't, I just, I do want to go back. I want to stress that these are historically used as matching dollars. And so we can turn two hundred thousand dollars into a one million dollar project. With the submittal of an application. And so that is what these dollars ultimately should be designed for, for maximum use for for Liberty Lake. Our next slide, please talk. So here's a snapshot of our lift and TIF and we will get into this a little bit later, especially during budget season. But here's where we stand with lift and TIF. And as you can see, each year, the city and the county contribute. A million dollars and the state as part of their participation in this program contributes a million dollars to this fund every year. And it is managed by Spokane County, but the increment area is mostly within the boundary of Liberty Lake. So that is why we are able to take advantage of these dollars. So as you can see, this is just gives you a snapshot of. Where we think we'll be at towards the end of next year. We had a lot of heavy projects, but a lot of public infrastructure projects. That were carried out by private companies. So Greenstone, you can see with. You know, the Harvard Indiana section and building out those public facilities. They are eligible to recoup their their use of these funds for public uses. They're able to recoup those dollars spent. And so as you can see here, we'll have probably a little bit of a lighter year heading into 2023 because we do have a lot of stuff for finishing up. Obviously, the big one being Kramer overpass. That's that's our most substantial one. And so this one, just like, just like the other ones, it it ebbs and flows with the activity that we see. And so this will build back up. As as we take a break potentially from some of these improvements. But this one, this one will hit a lot harder as we get into budget season as well. So next slide, please talk. So our last one is the Harvard Road mitigation. And one of the interesting things I do need to point out to this is it came to our attention when we submitted the annual report for 2021. We did that back in March of this year. We had an interfund loan on the books from back in 2013 or 2014 that has not been reconciled yet. We are doing that right now. And so that is owed back to the general fund. It is a net zero for the city. But we do need to get that fixed and we need to get it closed out. So we're in the process of doing that. That is good. So you're going to see that. In in the Harvard Road mitigation balance sheet. But we will get that. We're in the process of getting that reimbursed by Lyft as well. So we will clean up Harvard Road mitigation by the end of the year. But we do need to, we do need to fix that and did want everybody to be aware of that because we will discuss that during the. 2021 audit as well that we're going through and and the path, the path to to get that cleaned up. So. But as you can see, so these are our major capital funds. Obviously, the general fund is a big house of capital funds as well. And then we do have street, the street capital fund that is geared more toward equipment versus actual infrastructure projects. And so this gives you a snapshot of kind of where we're set, how these balances rise and fall and then what funds. Each of them. And so if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to take those. But that I just wanted to give you guys that snapshot, obviously, for now and then for the discussion during the public works yard contract discussion as well.
Hopefully, that outline was, it was a lot of information. I hope that.
Sorry, yeah.
The difficulty is, is when we've got so many projects in our capital facilities plan. And you don't have it in front of you. It's almost like taking a huge elephant. And yes, it's one bite at a time, but when you don't know what bite's going to affect what. It's difficult.
And that's why we had Kyle put this together. It's a lot easier to follow.
Yeah, thank you so much, Kyle, for doing that. Appreciate it.
Okay, I think the only one we haven't heard from yet is Mayor Pro Tem. Do you have anything?
Sure, let me jump in here. Kyle, did I hear you say earlier that. Currently, we had five million in reserves?
Correct, yep. Just in the reserve balance. And so we we have obligations to keep a certain amount in there. And that usually, you know, flowed between what our annual budget is right around three million dollars. We don't. Just like I said, that that balance ebbs and flows as well. So we just got a big tax payment from the county for property taxes. We get that twice a year. We are going to get a substantial reimbursement from Lyft later on this year. But we also do fund capital projects out of the general fund as well.
Can you go back to the Tiff and Lift slide? Thank you. So so I understand and everybody understands. The revenue dollars you show here. Are awarded us currently or to be?
So they are, they are awarded us. We have a, we have an agreement with the state. That they fund this every year and they are funding it through, I'll have to look it up, I believe it's 2026. And then we have the option to renew, I believe, for an additional five years after that.
Yep.
So the beginning balance of twelve million, seven hundred is, we can touch it right now today?
Yes, for for eligible products within the increment area, which is largely the River District. Or things that can potentially impact the River District.
Which is why we can do the.
Understand.
Overpass.
Yeah.
Just making sure it wasn't pie in the sky.
Right. And so and so we do have partners in this, which is it's important. And I will give you guys a balance sheet of what that looks like come budget season. What other entities are working on that may be eligible for these dollars as well.
So another question, if I could put you on the spot a little bit. I know the general fund goes up and down as we experience expenses. And I know that we have a. A reserve requirement that we. Or we have on set aside for as a requirement for the city policies. At the end of the, I've been on the council for two years now and it seems like. At the end of our budget cycle, we have leftover funds from the varying departments, the varying expenses. We did well on this project, well on that project, not so well over here. It seems like repetitively we have leftover funds. Do you expect and do you have any idea of how much that might be this year?
Yes, so I I would say that we. It's it's hard to say. I would be comfortable saying that we will have an ending balance somewhere around seven million dollars at the end of the year, maybe north of that.
And at the end of 21, weren't we at like?
We're at six point nine.
Six point nine?
Yeah.
And you're saying will be what at the end of this year?
North of seven, but not by much.
Understood. Perfect. I guess maybe the reason for not a lot of questions from from me regarding the presentation, other than the financing part of it here. Is I went to the the public meeting right here at the chambers and. Heard what people had to say. I've talked to several people one on one. This survey that has been given back to us says a lot in my mind. But most of my questions were answered at that public open meeting. Because I went directly to our team and asked them my specific questions. So I guess one follow up question on on the presentation of that. Is as you move forward through this design process. I had some specific questions regarding how big the the restrooms were going to be and and, you know, how this hallway and and how you could all. Repurpose the facility if the day came and you needed to. With, you know, some structural additions, that kind of thing. So as we move forward here, I guess I'm wondering. Between now and and whenever you you, I forget what the timeline was on the design schedule. But will council get a chance to see the progress on the design and have some input?
Yeah, so definitely. I mean, we we plan on, like I said, the the date we come back and give you guys an update is tentative. That will be more at a point where we feel like we're somewhere where we would like your input. So that's kind of a moving target, but it'll definitely be with enough time for you guys to give your input before we move towards the final phase. Because we definitely don't want to get too far along where we presenting something where you guys don't have a chance to change it or modify it. So our goal is to, you know, move forward as fast as possible. We're on a very tight timeline. But with that, making sure that we involve you guys. So we don't get too far ahead of ourselves and we're ending up with something that you guys aren't happy with.
Perfect, thank you. I guess my last comment then is having again, listened to many people and come to the open house here. You know, we we not too long ago paid that property off. And how long were we carrying that debt? What was it? A hundred and forty thousand a year for?
For 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 trailhead. It was one sixty seven a year and it was.
It was paid off early. So let's just say fifteen years.
Yeah, I don't think we paid that one off early because there was the the family that was was financing it, didn't want it. But anyway, it's been two or three years since it was paid off.
Yeah, so I guess my point is, I thought it was just recently, but maybe I'm wrong. But I guess my point is, is we've been living with that payment now for close to 20 years. So in my mind, from the beginning of this discussion, what you, what you, you're accustomed to a budget and it's been there for that long of a period of time. Really, to continue it, isn't the end of the world in the in, you know, tabletop budget concepts. Given the increased revenue potential of the golf course itself in regards to increased fees, simulator bays. From what I can see, it looks like we have a pretty, pretty good deal going with the restaurant portion of this, more so than we previously had. And we're able to offer something to the community. So. For me, when you incorporate all those, we're going to have some revenue increases. Yes, we're going to have more in expenses. I heard Kyle say that excess revenues are going to go to pay this off first. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So for me, I mean, I I want to listen to the people that came and participated. So for me, it's the expanded version. Thank you.
There's no more comments, I guess. Oh, go ahead, Councilman Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. I I guess my frustration is that. We have a. A proposal or a design that was put forward to the community that, of course, the community supports. I mean, I, if I wasn't on the council, I would support it because it's it's a great concept compared to the other one. My challenge is that, as Councilmember Van Orman said. We've got a huge increase in the cost of the public works yard, which to me is a priority. And if we're looking at how much money we have versus how much. The public words guarded is is going to cost. I'd rather put the money toward the public works yard. I think the other wildcard in this and part of the reason why. I did not want to break apart the driving range from the building is because something like this I thought would happen. Where we are, we are forgetting about the driving range, which we don't know how much that's going to cost. It could cost five hundred thousand, it could cost two million. I mean, the the numbers that we were getting were all over the place. And so. If we've got the driving range that we still have to do and the public works yard, and now we're talking about increasing the budget on this another 10%. That concerns me. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz.
One of the questions that I did have was getting an update on the status of the assessment of the driving range. Because I think that that was one of the things where we're going to figure out what the cost might be. But then my next question, I think maybe is more for Lisa, as far as what are our next steps? Are we making a decision tonight? And is that going to happen in this meeting? Because I don't see it on the agenda for the seven o'clock.
Yeah, the the request was direction from council on which which option to proceed with.
Mayor, if I may, um, so first of all, as to the status of the driving range. We are expecting the request for qualifications to go out within the next several weeks for the driving range and it's. We should have those back, award that, get the design and be in a position to bid that this fall. Obviously, we're in the midst of an unprecedented construction season and we're doing the best that we can with the staff that we have. So that's that's the driving range piece of it. The second, the the second thing is with regard to this request. We are looking for general direction from city council. This is non binding. You will not need to make a final decision until we bring forward the the final GMP in August. So August, between August 16th and September 6th, 7th. But we we do want the direction of city council. We want to know what council is thinking because this is going to drive. The design going forward. We're at the place where we have to start digging into the details for the for the design and permitting process. To get to that final number.
Uh, Councilmember Van Orman, just I'm just watching the time. We've got about five minutes before we have to break.
Absolutely. Like I went ahead and emailed a little bit earlier. I think the bathrooms are definitely important to make sure that we get that right. Don't want anybody out there in the foyer waiting. And if we can get the restrooms expanded, maybe perhaps consolidate where we've got the pro shop. Consolidated to the regular to where they're utilizing that as well. That might save you a little bit of funds there. I'm still to the thing of, we've got a lot of things happening this year. And I'm for the six point four.
So I guess we, I don't know, would would you want a motion on this, Lisa, or do you just want?
I'd like, I'd like a motion, please.
Go ahead, Councilmember Dunn.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council expressed preference to the expanded option as presented.
Yeah, second from Councilmember Solberg. All right. So is there any further discussion before we go to a vote? All right, all in favor of proceeding, giving direction to proceed with the expanded version of the trailhead project, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, eyes have it four to two with council members Cargill and Van Orman dissenting. All right, you guys have your direction.
Thank you all.
We've got a couple of minutes before seven. We've got a couple of minutes before seven. Has anything else before we break?
Given that vote, I think we, I would like to at least have clarification on where this money is going to come from, the extra money. And we, I, I know we heard from Kyle earlier, but I mean, there were all sorts of different scenarios. So I, I think it needs to be nailed down.
So that's the scenario that Kyle had in the, the presentation that he was just giving. Golf operations, funds and REIT funds.
And that's it?
Yes.
And it will, and just so I, I have an understanding, um, based on what Councilmember, uh, Foyer said and, and what Kyle said. The repayment on this will come above anything else.
Kyle?
The repayment, so golf operations, any additional revenue will be put towards this payment. And then a backup, any, any backup funds will be coming from REIT.
All right, guys, it is, what time is it? Can I get out of my full screen? All right, it's six fifty. We'll go ahead and take a ten minute break and we'll be back at seven P M. for our regular meeting.
Thank you all.
Okay, all right, everybody. Let me get full screen. Okay, everybody, welcome to our Tuesday. June seventh, regular council meeting. Welcome, everybody. It's so great to be back in person and I'll reiterate what I said at the six o'clock session. It's very refreshing not to have to read, um, the governor's Washington ready plan. Um, we are now required to be in person with the option of Zoom. So we'll continue to have Zoom for anybody who can't make it into City Hall. But it's great to be back officially in person. So thanks, everybody for coming. So we're going to go ahead and start off with the invocation given by Councilmember Cargill, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please join us.
Our Heavenly Father, we are very grateful for the opportunity to be here as a community this evening. To work on community issues and to work together for the betterment of Liberty Lake. We are mindful of the many problems that are going on in the world right now. We are also mindful of the anniversary of D-Day and are thankful for our troops. Who performed that magnificent task on that magnificent day. We are grateful, Father, for your presence here this evening and help guide us to make the best decisions possible for our community. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, well, oh, I actually have the gavel now. We'll call the meeting to order. Um, so we will go on to our roll call. Go ahead and do this again. Councilmember Cargill?
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Present.
Councilmember Van Orman. Mayor Pro Tim Foyer.
Here.
Councilmember Solberg?
Here.
Councilmember Dunn?
Happy to be here.
All right, all present and accounted for. Um, next we are up to agenda approval.
Oh yeah, I can certainly do that. So I guess there is just one, uh, uh, topic for consideration for council to can, uh, consider is under, uh, item nine. Four, which is oath of office, uh, regarding the vacant council seat position four. Wondering if the council has, would be open to, um, moving the oath of the office to the end of the meeting. Given the amount of discussion in our agenda current. Giving that person some time to get up to speed and catch up to the discussion, basically. I don't know how else to say it.
And any feedback is, are you, are you making a motion to amend it?
Sure.
So motion is to amend, um, the agenda to move the oath of office to after action, after action items?
Fifteen.
Oh. Okay, after ordinances. Okay, is there a second? There's a second by Councilmember Solberg. Any discussion? Right, not seeing or hearing any, all those in favor of moving the oath of office for our new council member. To move that to after ordinances, number fifteen, please say aye. All right, any, any opposed? All right, motion carries five, one, Councilmember Cargill dissenting. All right, all right. So we've got that. So anyone move the agenda, amended agenda? Yes, sir.
Can, can I, um, make a quick motion to add public comment to, um, nine A? I guess it would be nine A one point five.
After the interviews before executive session?
Or I'm open to it being, uh, just somewhere in there. I just think we need to have public comment for it.
Yep. And so do we have a second to add public comment between nine A one and nine A two?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Kurtz. Any discussion? All in favor of mo- adding public comment after the interview app, inter- after interviewing the applicants, please say aye. Any post? All right, I'm to make some notes here. So motion passes six, one. All right, so we have a minute.
I think it was six zero, wasn't it?
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry. Yeah, we don't have seven yet. All right. Okay.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve the, uh, agenda as amended.
Second.
We have second by Councilmember Dunn. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye. Any opposed? Right, motion passes six, zero. All right, thank you very much. So we are up to citizen comments. So, uh, we are taking public comments both here in person and on Zoom. If you're here in person, there are some yellow sheets or there should be on the table by the front door. If you just fill that out with your name and the topic. If it's specific to an agenda item, you can put that on there. Um, you can just go ahead and hand those, uh, you can hand them directly to me if you want, since we're missing a couple of people here in, in chambers. So if you want to make a public comment, fill out that yellow sheet. You'll have three minutes, same with people on Zoom. If you have a comment from, that you want to make over Zoom, please send a note to Todd Henderson, our meeting manager in chat. And he'll let me know that you want to make a comment. Just remember, it is truly public comment. There is no discussion back and forth. If there's something that we'll need to follow up on, we'll make sure we have your contact information to follow up. Go through that whole spiel and nobody's going to want to make a comment. I turned y'all off. All right, Todd, do you have anybody on Zoom? Okay, all right, going once, going twice for public comment. All right. We will move on to announcements, proclamations and special presentations. We don't have any tonight. So we will move on to reports and inquiries. Do we have any reports, uh, from city council? Councilmember Dunn?
I'll take it. So, um, first, um, I bring forward Friday of last week, uh, Councilmember, uh, Solberg and I attended Ridgeline High School. The, um, Crystal Larson, one of the epic contributor teachers of that high school, had organized a, a class session, uh, around planning and land use. And, and a student project, uh, students were asked to try and present, you know, um, the placement of various features and aspects of a community. It was a really excellent opportunity to understand the perspectives of, you know, um, youth in the generation. And then also to share like our experiences and how these things come together. Uh, I was honored to be able to attend and honored to be able to listen, compliment and potentially challenge, uh, some of the students. So a rewarding experience for everyone. I'll then also say, uh, the, I'm part of the S T A group and, um, the Spokane Transit Authority had a planning and development in-person meeting, uh, one of their first, uh, since COVID, in which the results, uh, from a, a collection of studies as well as interpretations by a consulting group were delivered. And big in my mind and listening was significant change in transportation patterns for our region. And most specifically increases in trips across state line at I ninety. It will become, I think, very challenging soon, uh, with the dramatic increase in, uh, residential, uh, building permitting activity in Cootney County. Coupled with the dramatic increases of employment in Spokane County. S T A can only be part of the solution. Their challenge lies now in trying to create cross-border, uh, mass transit options. So, um, kudos to the staff and their efforts to try and engage policymakers in Cootney County for support. Um, I'm hopeful. But, um, yeah, really interesting, uh, significant housing, uh, residential permitting activity in Cootney County, outpacing Spokane County. Even though Cootney County is a third the size. So to give some perspective on the amount of growth that's happening in the Rastan Prairie. Um, and then I just draw out, um, a really, really great thanks to, uh, Chief Simmons. Lieutenant Morgan, this big event we had on Saturday, uh, down at the Legacy Church, we had, um, I think there was a hundred and fifty registered student ath- registered athletes playing rain, playing basketball in the rain all day. I mean, they started at nine through an ending, ending three o'clock bracket and a highlight for me was of course, um, Chief Simmons along with, um, uh, his, his group of policemen with, um, our fire department. So.
We won't talk about the outcome of that.
The outcome is great for everybody. I'd tell you, and yeah, chief man, he's got some hustle. I was watching it and, uh, yeah, just great, great. Experience and for those, um, men and women to step forward and have fun and demonstrate for the community, I thought was, was great. So, thanks.
Thank you for doing that. And, and I was fortunate to be one of the interviewees from the S T A consultants. And that was one of the big topics we talked about. Was trying to work with, with Cootney County and the challenges that that brings. Right, we have any other council reports? No, okay, moving right along. Mayor's report, um, I'm just going to keep it really short, though. I've had a lot of stuff going on the last few weeks. Most, uh, most of note, we've been having the city administrator interviews. Jen Camp, Heidi Workman and I interviewed, um, four of the five candidates that Proffman, um, had put forward. One of them dropped out because he got another job. Um, and then we eliminated one out of those interviews. And then since then, a third, another one has dropped out due to social security reasons. There, where he is currently employed, they put into social security. We don't hear. So, um, that was a concern. So we're down to our, our two finalists. Um, and so tomorrow, we've had our staff interview panel. We've gotten all, I've gotten all of the feedback from that. Tomorrow is our partners panel. We have, uh, five of our partners, partner agencies, um, participating in that. And then on the fourteenth, we will have the council panel and we still have some discussions to have about that. Probably too much to, I know we've got a packed meeting today, so we'll, we'll continue with, with that format. We'll figure that out. So other than that, a meeting with the National Guard, um, so members again tomorrow morning about the proposed project on the Department of Natural Resource Land next to George Key. Some work to come on that. Had a really interesting conversation with one of our, um, residents came to me, um, at the farmer's market, um, with some ideas to work on with the P D. With regards to some simple golf cart signage to remind people about rules and such. So, um, she gave me a nice packet and I'll be talking to the P D. See, get their input on that. And the market's been going great. Um, fir- first week was a little chilly, second week the tent flew over. Um, and then at Saturday, I managed to dump water on one of our residents when I was trying to get the water off the tent. But it was all, it all went really well. And I think we're, we're nailing things down. So obviously, um, welcome any council members to, to join us on any given Saturday. Even if it's just for an hour or so, really appreciate that. All right, city administrator report. Kyle?
I'm going to do my best Jen Camp impression since she is out this week. We do have a very short, uh, report. Uh, for everybody this week, we're going to kick it off with David Williams, our city engineer for updates on projects.
David, are you there? Oh, you're on mute.
Uh, sorry, I'm like talking to myself. That was great. All right. I, uh, want to give a quick update for the traffic, uh, some of the traffic control, uh, items you'll see in the neighborhoods of Liberty Lake. So let's get, let's, let's, uh, get right into it. So the first one is Harvard, uh, Indiana intersection, uh, next slide, Tom. And you'll notice now that the intersection actually is energized. So that happened, uh, I want to say it was today. Please be aware and obey the traffic signal lights and all of the traffic signal laws. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, this is going to be the left, uh, lane closure for Trailhead Golf Course, uh, due to construction and course, uh, of the course driveway. You'll know that one lane will be, uh, taken away on the eastbound Country Vista, right at the golf course. So just kind of be aware of that. If you're making the left turn out of the safe way or ma- making a right turn on a mission, uh, off a mission avenue, just notice that there will be one lane going Country Vista eastbound to make either, uh, either of those maneuvers. Okay, next slide, please. Uh, here is the I ninety, uh, traffic control operations on, uh, I ninety eastbound and westbound. It'll begin intermittently this month, so there will be lanes that will be taken, just one lane on the exterior of the eastbound and westbound lanes, necessary to do some work on the shoulders, uh, that Deggerstrom and Wash Dot will need to complete, uh, this, this month. Next slide, please. You'll notice continued, uh, traffic control operations on Country Vista and Kramer, uh, between, uh, May second to June tenth. The traffic lane on eastbound Country Vista will be down to one lane again. Please obey traffic control signs. And also please note the, um, the, uh, mile per hour, uh, drop as well to, to twenty-five miles per hour. Next slide, please. And lastly here, this is kind of the big one, the Mission Avenue Road closure to through traffic, uh, for the Wash Dot Deggerstrom Construction Work. Just note, I'm going to make sure that this slide goes out on social media so people see exactly where the detour, uh, will be. If you notice the white dot in the middle, uh, bottom middle of the picture, it's approximate location of the future roundabout. So there's going to be a road closure just past, I think it's Bitterroot and, uh, that'll be east of Bitterroot and then west of the storage facility. So the yellow arrows, uh, indicate the detour locations to get over to, uh, proper, I guess, uh, main line, um, Harvard. From the west area of Liberty Lake. So if you have any questions about that, please do not hesitate to ask. This will begin on June twentieth. We want to make sure we did that after the school year ended. So that will be where, uh, that roundabout will be constructed. And we're, this will be a connection from south of the freeway to north of the freeway and how that whole project, the bridge project will become into fruition. Okay, next slide, please. I think that's the end. If you have any questions, please give me a call. Uh, you can write to me. You can also give me a call too. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you, citizens of Liberty Lake.
Thanks, David.
You're welcome.
David, this, before you go, this is Tom.
Yeah.
We've had several questions from the legacy, uh, community about any update on a timeline for Kramer South. When that might be, uh, open again.
That will be open most likely. We're shooting for beginning of September. Um, I will, um, that will be right before the school year begins. We're in the middle of construction right now. Things are actually proceeding quite quickly. Um, I don't want to over promise here, but I'm just going to keep the same date as being the, uh, beginning of September.
Thank you, David.
Great, thank you very much.
Hey, uh, quick question, David, regarding the closure on, on Mission, it starts the twentieth. Is there a projected reopen?
Yeah, we're trying to do the same time as the, uh, as the opening down for the Kramer Rehab Project. So it'll be good, the beginning of September. Will you start?
Any other questions for David before we let him run away? All right. Thank you.
Have a great day, guys.
All right, upcoming activities. Uh, so we got the Rotary Soapbox Derby, June eleventh. Uh, Friends Book Sale seventeenth and eighteenth. We got the Kuanis Yard Sales, same, uh, seventeenth and eighteenth. Skyhawk camps begin on the nineteenth. Kuanis movie is July third. Do we know what movie that is?
That would be Ron's Gone Wrong.
A day after for the Fourth of July, we got concert and fireworks. And then later on in July, touch a truck at Orchard Park. Any questions for me to pass along to Jen?
So, any questions? All right. Thanks. All right, so that was a short one. Um, we'll move on to Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District. Is there anybody here who'd like to report? Or on, I don't see anybody on Zoom. Don't see any. If they come, we will circle back. All right, Spokane Valley Fire Department. Chief, I saw you somewhere back there. Welcome.
Good evening, council members and attendees as well. Good evening. Uh, everyone's had a great day, great month, this last month. So I'm here to report our numbers. Uh, Mr. Henderson, next slide, please. So, uh, for the month of May, we had a hundred and eight calls, nine one one calls here in Liberty Lake that made up five point, uh, five percent of our total call point. So that's roughly about three and a half calls a day. Uh, next slide, sir. Those, uh, nine one one calls, uh, required eighty-nine responses. So again, not all calls, uh, are completed. So sometimes we get cancellations, whether it's from P D or, uh, A M R unit that's on scene, or it could be a call out for multiple units. That, uh, first unit gets on scene and says, hey, we don't- that first unit gets on scene and says, hey, we don't need the other uh three or four units and need cancel them out. So that's why there's only eighty-nine uh responses. Next slide, please. Uh so for the month, uh eighty-nine point nine percent of our calls were EMS in nature. Uh we had fifteen twenty-six six call uh sick calls. Uh we had six chest pain calls, uh four thirty-two unknowns. And uh again, we know what the call is. It's just dispatched. It's a thirty-two unknown. That's just the MPTS coding for it. Uh it's just a person down, uh but they don't know why they're down. Uh four nine echoes, which are CPR in progress, so would be somebody who uh has had a heart attack. It's or could have been a traumatic uh injury, but they are uh on the scene uh where we're performing lifesaving measures. And then for seizure calls. Next slide, sir. Uh for the year, we've had five hundred and sixty-six nine one one calls, which have made up six point one percent of our total call volume. So this is close to four calls a day. Uh so just so you see where where we're at, where we're busy, and you can see uh for the bulk of our calls are are at the next slide, sir. And those uh calls, we had five hundred and thirty-nine total responses uh in our area. So again, we uh we're steady. Uh next slide, sir. And for the year, we're averaging almost eighty-five percent of our calls here uh in Liberty Lake are EMS in nature. Uh with the bulk of our calls, sixty-three have been fall calls. And again, I already explained, we are working on that with uh prevention, and we do have Chief Rogers here. And uh we are looking at implementing fall, fall bars, which uh we, you know, we want to make sure that when we go into people's homes, we have the opportunity to put in some fall bars while we're doing smoke detectors. And I think it's just an excellent way uh to make sure that their house and homes are safer and give them an opportunity to catch themselves. So it may keep them from uh breaking a bone or getting a severe injury. Uh twenty-eight, uh twenty-six uh sick calls, uh twenty-two motor vehicle accidents, nineteen fire alarm activations, and nineteen nine echo CPR calls. Next slide, sir. And I apologize for this, because it's very tiny. I'd like to go over some significant events and uh significant incidents. The first thing I'd like to do is point out our two new deputy chiefs with the Valley Fire. We have Deputy Chief Tom Hatley, who's our new Deputy Chief of Admin Services, and our new Deputy Chief Zach. And Zach is our new Deputy Chief of Operations.
Right, welcome. Congratulations.
And then again, we have very long process, so I'm very happy. I'm excited. We got some new deputy chiefs here and and Deputy Chief Greg Rogers as well. Uh six months uh in his new position, he promoted position. So we're, we're all new, so take it easy on us. We're doing our best for you. Uh so during this past month, we had a fire prevention program class, the Fire Investigation one oh one class is put on by uh Rick Frye. It uh over, since two thousand and eleven, so roughly the last eleven years, he's taught over ninety-three hundred kids in our area. And uh with the focus of stopping uh children from starting fires. And so during that timeframe, my understanding is only three of those kids that we have taught actually went on to start fires. So that is a a huge number uh of wins for us and for our community. So very, very proud of that. It's a na- nationally recognized program, and uh it's, it's just awesome. So significant, significant events. Uh we've had a motor vehicle crash, uh auto versus auto. Uh one person had a uh broken wrist and the other one did have chest pain. Those things were passed off to AMR for transport and seen turned over to PD. We had a smoke investigation call uh where someone was burning trash in the front yard. We were able to to put it out and it and explain to them that that's not, we would, you don't do that. We don't, don't burn trash. Yeah, so especially at this time of the year, we've been very lucky that it's wet, but uh that can change. We had another unauthorized burning where people were burning uh wood, just regular wood on their property. And again, uh that was more geared towards, they had a child in the house that was uh uh like starting fires. So we, we did put it out, and we did have a a sit down and talk to them and uh provide them with educational materials and I spoke to them about uh our fire center program and making sure that they don't do that again. Uh finally, we did have a major motor vehicle crash here with the motorcycle, and that was on May twenty-fifth. It was when we had a uh a death injury on that one. We performed all lifesaving measures, but were unable to save the person. So that was uh the last of our significant uh events and incidents. So at this time, I'll open up to any questions that you may have.
Um just, you know, thank you for, for the communication with the public and the programs that you have. You know, I, I think, you know, should probably put, we probably put David in contact with Julie. If not, we will, but I know we've been sharing a lot of the, the stuff on Facebook that your department's been sharing with our community. So when you get to the point of rolling out the, the grab bars and whatnot, just let us know. We'll help promote that here within our community.
Absolutely. And not my fire department, ma'am, our fire department. This is our.
You're right.
We're all the tip of the spear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I leave, I'd like to thank that gentleman there, that VFW veteran there. Sir, thank you for your service, sir. Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you. All right. And we have Parks and Arts Commission. And after that, um I did make a mistake earlier. I did, I, it was my fault. I forgot to put our presentation for the Gallant Guards of Liberty, talking about the moving wall. So we'll, we'll go to them after the Parks and Arts Commission. Do we have anyone here from Parks and Arts? Okay, we don't. All right, so moving along. So again, my apologies to the group. So if unless the council has any objections, we will go ahead and let them present um the update on the moving wall for September.
Yeah, let me uh tell you a little bit about that. First of all, uh my name is Don Walker, and I'm a team member of the uh Gallant Guards of Liberty Lake, and we're bringing the wall to uh Liberty Lake in September. I'm a member of this team, but before I read my remarks, I must tell you that all of the members of this team are supposedly volunteers. That is not true. We were all kidnapped. And uh forced to join this group. We didn't have any choices. Placed in indentured servitude by a couple of people that were absolutely enthusiastic and committed about getting this wall to Liberty Lake. And I think you all know who those two are. It's Anita DG Garcia and Rick Shout Shoots, who's not here, is not here tonight. But they just kind of grinded up on all of us and made us do this. And so normally, when we have a kidnapping, we would report this to the chief of police. But he is also being kidnapped by this group. So uh want to talk, I'm gonna, in a second, I'm going to talk about uh little information and and some thanks. Uh but I want to say one thing personally here. This coming of the wall is important to a lot of people. And and I say that from a personal sense. I had a brother, Lieutenant Richard H. Walker, who was killed in Vietnam. Silver Star Award winner, um grew up in Spokane, and he's one person's name on that wall, and there's fifty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty others. So the people that are touched, whether it be family, friends, or everything. And I've been to these other presentations. This is a big deal. And we're, we're really happy to step forward with this. That being said, now let me get on to my comments here. All right. Uh it's really not often that a community brings such an essential part of history to the city we live in. Now, the Gallant Guards of Liberty Lake, a local community of veterans and in interested citizens, including family and friends, we're doing that, just that. The Moving Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall is coming to Liberty Lake September fifteenth through the nineteenth. This idea started in twenty twenty and been through all kinds of ups and downs and that. But now it's really going to happen, and it's really going to be here. However, none of this can be done without the help and support from the people, businesses, and partners such as Global Credit Union, uh Forest Recon Association of the US Marine Corps, the VFW Post fourteen thirty-five, uh Icon Imagery, New Big, New Beginnings, uh Post Falls Family Dental, uh Combat Vet Riders, the Vet Center, the Washington State Fallen Heroes Project, the Kuanis Club, the Century Centennial Rotary Club of Liberty Lake, Wes Anderson, the State Chaplain Department of Washington, VFW, uh the US Evans Project and and the UPS Store, uh and so many others and businesses that helped us put all this together and will help us honor these brave uh veterans that died in Vietnam. Uh I stand here this evening as a spokesman for the Gallant Guards, and and we collectively would like to thank you, the city of Liberty Lake. We'd like to thank the council people and the, and the mayor, and we'd like to um expand some other things and so I already said that. Okay, all right. We'd also like to add a couple other specials, uh or name the committee people. The committee people are DG Garcia, the brains and head and heart of this thing. Uh Rick Shoots, who jumped on early and and pushed us all there. Tom Polly from the Board of Global Credit Union. Jen Camp from our, our group, and just tremendous help from City Parks and Rec and Acting City Administrator. Brian Astmas, who's the Central Valley School District Volunteer Coordinator and Fire Commissioner. Chief of, Chief of Police Damon Simmons, uh uh Police Department Ambassador John Booze. Say, yeah, I say that wrong all the time. Boo Joes. Gerald, Gerald Olson from Central Valley, and Trevor Solcom City and Wall Logistics Coordinator. And Laura Bracken, who's our graphics and website development, Shane Brickner and myself. And we have one other committee member that is uh our mayor, Chris Kamaskas. So want to thank all those people. Vietnam is not the only veterans we hope to shed light upon as this memory sheds light on how we could have handled some conflicts better, where everyone came home. Uh we will remember every woman and man who has ever worn the uniform as an honorable sign of their duty to our country while at home and abroad, to ensure that the freedoms we have today remain as sacred rights for the years to come. We're honored to have been here and to give this address to the council, and we thank you very much for your support.
We're looking forward greatly to to the opportunity for this to come. And I said, I know our, our staff's been very involved, so um just keep us, keep us involved. And I know we're going to be recruiting for volunteers here soon, so.
We, we, we do have a few of the, the prisoners uh here tonight. We have DG Garcia and and John Polly over there and uh Brian, there's Brian, and who am I missing? Chris, and did I miss somebody? Okay, thank you.
Right, thanks for coming. And again, I apologize, Mike, for having to move you down. All right. Yes, thank you. All right, okay, so we are on to workshop discussion. We are working to fill the vacant council seat position number four. As you know, we have five applicants here tonight. Um before we start into that, we've got a couple housekeeping things with regards to the process. I had sent uh food for thought out to the council with regards to the time that we want to give each candidate. I think in the, in the past couple of rounds, I think we've shortchanged people. I think we had like ten minutes um plus a two-minute closing. Given the importance of these positions, I, I think it deserves more, whether it's fifteen or twenty. So I'd like to hear from you guys, you know, what, what timeframe for each candidate you'd like to allow. Um and then we can go to the next step. Mayor Protem.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as we discussed earlier, um I'd like to propose that we do a minimum of fifteen minutes with a two-minute summary.
Anybody opposed to that?
Sounds good.
All right, so fifteen minutes it is. That worked a lot, well. Um and so a little bit different this, this time around. We had lots of great questions submitted uh by the council. So we're just looking, and I, I printed out a copy for everybody. I thought we, they're printed out in position order, so it's not going around the table, but in order of your position. Um so the thought was for each um member to ask one of their questions. And depending on the timeframe, we will start back around again. Um just as, we just need to make sure we ask the same questions of each candidate. If um and it's going to depend on uh how much time the person has left. So if, if somebody's long-winded, they might get through three questions. If they're not, they might, might get through all of them, but that we'll probably have some leftover in the end. Um and there's some, some up for grabs uh on the end under my name. So I, I will, I'll ask uh when as we go around. But feel free to steal if you, if you'd like to. So with that being said, I know we are looking at drawing names out of a hat. I don't know if anybody got the names. We're, we're missing a couple admin people tonight, so pardon me while we struggle a little bit. Somebody want to, uh let's just do that real quick. So let me just real quick do this. And we're going to put the names on, so we've got.
Mayor, we could also just do it here on the, on one of these apps if you want.
That'd be great, because I'm not good at that, so go for it.
And now that I said that, it's going to be very, very slow.
Of course it will. All right, so just give us a couple minutes. So actually, um we'll go ahead and we'll get this candidate situated in the conference room. If you guys wanted to follow Lieutenant Morgan, um and we'll call you guys in um one at a time. And and no trying to listen to the, the session on your phone.
We have five, right?
Yes, sir. We have Mike K., Mike B., Keith.
Jed and Mary. It's Mary the last one. Can't remember.
Yeah, Linda.
Linda.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, first one will be Mike Harry.
Okay, Mike Harry's first, and then who's on deck?
Then it will be Jed.
Then Jed. Yes, yeah, give us.
And then it will be Keith.
Okay.
And then it will be
Mike Kennedy.
Yep.
All right. All right, Mike the Harry's first, with Jed on deck.
So Chris, just to recap the questioning action.
Yes.
So each council member will ask a question.
Yes.
And we will exhaust fifteen minutes.
Yes.
And that will, in the first round, then define what the rest of the questions will be asked for the rest of the candidates.
Sure.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
So we know additional questions asked of any candidate that is not already asked as another candidate.
That's a good point.
I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Say that again.
So pick a good question for your question, because you have to ask.
Once you figure a question, that's the only question you ask.
Yeah.
It, it's important that each candidate be asked the same questions.
No, I get it. So if we get to a round two, just ask the same question, right?
Correct. We will secure the questions in the first round.
Right. All right, Mike, Mike Harry, thanks for joining us. Welcome back.
Thank you.
So we're going to start uh the timer at fifteen minutes. So we've got a series of questions. Um like you heard me explaining, then you'll have two minutes to wrap up. So we are going to go ahead. Uh position one is Mayor Protem. So yeah, um Lieutenant, if you could shut that other door as well, we'll go ahead and start with Mayor Protem.
Okay, my first question is, uh how have you been preparing yourself for a position on the council?
I've been preparing in a lot of ways. Um just through my education, through learning about city government. I'm a part, I'm a planner, so I'm, I know a lot about how city government works. Uh on the backend, I've deal with city councils on the front end presenting in front of them for planning commissions as well. I also ran and for this position back in November. It's a close race, didn't quite make it, but uh I also prepared that way by learning, meeting the voters, going out there and talking to people uh one-on-one and getting a website going and doing interactions that way as well.
Thank you.
All right, position two, Councilmember Cargill, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mike. Good to see you. Um can you uh tell me how you balance wants versus needs?
That's a good question. Um I guess you're going to have to look at the needs and how that weighs out. And you're going to have to put like a weight on it, you know, the needs will sometimes overweight the wants. You know, you have a wish list that you'll want to have done, but you want to make sure you meet the needs. So like, like you guys are looking at uh the trailhead, and you know, what kind of amenities you want to put in it, you know? Should you go big or just kind of go medium? And you, you want to look at all those to make sure that you've got what you need. But you might want to go a little bit extra to get the one, so that it's a fine balance that you have to look at. But you also have to look at the future and how you want. But you also have to look at the future and how you want to, what it's going to look like at the end. Thank you.
All right. Great. Next is Councilmember Dunn.
What are the most important future opportunities for Liberty Lake?
How's the economic development, getting new businesses in here? There's a lot of opportunities with that. I see the, you know, the Apple distribution facility that's coming. That is going to be a really nice facility that's going to bring a lot of other opportunities to offer support other businesses like restaurants and other businesses can come in to help with that. That's a good opportunities there.
All right, next we have Councilmember Kurtz. All right, Mike, what do you hope to contribute to the city council and the larger community if you were appointed? And are there areas or issues you're interested in focusing on if appointed?
I think the areas that I would be interested in is just the planning aspect, the comprehensive plan. Is it up to date? Do we need to focus more on how that plan is incorporated with our zoning? And make sure that they're both compatible and they're looking for the future that the city's going to grow in a good way. That's compatible with existing land uses.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Salberg, you're next.
How many city council or other city meetings, commission or library meetings have you attended in the last year? What did you learn?
Could you say that again? I didn't hear you over the speaker. City council meetings?
City council or city commission meetings?
I've been to quite a few city council meetings and commission meetings over the last two years. But this one, I've been on Zoom, I've been watching the Liberty Lake ones throughout the year. But I attend constantly at my job at City of Port Lane. So I've done, met the city council there, but for here, I've just been on Zoom, just been to them.
And what did you learn from our meetings?
I learned there's just a lot of things going on with the city in regards to traffic and the concerns with that and the growth and how the growth is going.
All right, next, Councilmember Van Orman.
Hi, Mike.
Hi.
This one's probably pretty easy for you, but what outside sources do you do you gain your knowledge from? I know it's planning and so forth, what you're doing.
I also sit on the long-range planning, long-range, I'm on the school district's long-range planning committee, commission. So I sit on that on the board and part of that commission, you're dealing with the school district and what, where should schools grow and stuff like that. So dealing with that aspect as far as the school district, I've had a background of that. Which city? That is City of Port Lane School District.
Okay.
Any other outside sources?
In regards to?
That you gain your knowledge from?
Through my, through my education, that outside source through, I was in the military. That outside source, just.
All right, I'll pick one from the up-for-grabs list here. We often hear from citizens that there are too many apartments in Liberty Lake. How would you address this concern with a resident?
That is a very good question. You would address it by saying that there are certain land uses that need to be incorporated into a city. And there needs to be multifamily in certain locations, the single family and others. But the amount of it is part of the concern that the resident has, like you have way too many apartments. And then you could kind of balance that by showing statistics that we have this many single family, this many apartment units and kind of explain to them that it's really not that high in the percentage overall aspect.
Thank you. All right, so we'll go for round two, Council, Mayor Protem.
Sweet. The council has an aggressive capital improvement projects list. Can you name three current or future projects and the estimated cost for the projects?
One of the capital improvement projects is the one on Apple Way and Country Vista Boulevard where they're going to do a right turn lane. I don't know the amount on that. The other one is what they talked about, the roundabout there on Mission. Well, the other capital improvement with the trailhead, obviously, and that's what 6.4 million. If not going higher.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure, Councilmember Cargill.
Yes. Mike, if you were in our position, what question would you ask a council candidate?
Good question. What brings you to Liberty Lake? Why this area? You know, this little bit more background, maybe a background question about the person. Thank you.
All right, we're on to Councilmember Dunn.
What are the city's greatest assets and strengths?
Obviously, the greatest assets are the people and the employees that work here and support the city. Great asset. The other assets are the parks and trails. That's a great asset for the community to have, to go out, visit the parks and enjoy the open spaces. It's really important and I think that's a major asset for the city. The other assets are the convenience, the local shopping, grocery stores and stuff like that. Quick and easy to get around in the city here.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Kurtz. Unpartisan position, how would you balance your personal beliefs with your responsibility with on behalf of the community?
Well, I have to do that regularly on my job. You just take it. Just do the, look at the facts, look at the zoning, look at the ordinance, just look at the rules and you can't have politics or religion play into any of your thought process and decision-making. You've just got to look, treat everyone fairly and equally regardless of what the situation is. So you're not showing favoritism to one person over another one. Just want to make sure it's a fair system that you're implementing.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Salberg.
Thank you. If you weren't chosen, do you plan to get involved in other ways here in Liberty Lake? And if so, how?
If I'm not chosen, yes, I definitely want to still get involved with other opportunities or volunteer opportunities within Liberty Lake. I would do that in any way possible that I can, getting on other committees if possible and volunteering that way.
Okay, Councilmember Van Orman.
This one should be pretty easy for you as well. What is the role of city government in your eyes?
Oh, city government is to be fair, equal and make sure that everyone's treated fairly and make sure there's safe community for everybody to enjoy. Want to make sure that everyone has a safe opportunity to enjoy the area equally.
All right. So follow up to that. What is the role of a council member versus the role of the mayor in our strong mayor form of government?
The role of the council is to make decisions for the better of the community. And that is also part of what the mayor would be involved with as well.
All right, thank you. Okay, back up to the top, Mayor Protem.
Perfect. The city council will soon be discussing how best to use the ARP funds. What would be your top two or three suggestions?
Question. I would throw the money into looking at the comprehensive plan and updating it. I think it needs just a whole rewrite of the comprehensive plan, which may need a consultant. Because you know, you put a patch on it, a patch on it, a patch on it, eventually it's over patched and it's time to do a full rewrite, a full look at it and look at a long-range plan that's not just been patched. So I think if you throw the money at that, that would be a good investment into the community and a good long-range plan for the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, this is kind of a two-part question. What scares you most about serving on the council? And then on the flip side of that, what excites you most?
I don't know if anything really scares me because I'm used to public comment, used to people saying, you know, this is, you're making the wrong decision. You're not doing something right. You know, you deal with those things through public, you're dealing with the people all the time. So what excites me is just about doing better for the community, being involved in the city and making the community a better place for everybody. I enjoy that. I enjoy just being, you know, having that opportunity that, you know, that could, those decisions you make now last 20, 30, 50, 100 years. So you really want to make sure you got it right.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Dunn, you're up.
Who are the city's most important partners in serving the community?
I would say the stakeholders, the local businesses. Those people are down there really trying to do what's right for the city. You want to make sure you have your local businessmen and women that are in, in the city. You're involved with them, you're communicating with them, you've got some kind of coordination with them. You're making sure their needs are met and you're also working with the other local developers and builders in the area to find out what, what's going on in that area.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Kurtz. Great, there are a number of problems, Council, working on. Describe how you would balance fiscal stewardship with investment in the community of Liberty Lake.
That's a good question because you want to make sure you have funds that aren't just spend willy-nilly. You want to make sure that they're spent where they're needed and where they're most going to be valued and used. So you definitely want to take a look at all those different aspects and get all the information you can before making a decision that'll, you know, be the right decision for spending those funds.
All right, back to Councilmember Salberg.
Mike, what would your approach be to how you would decide and how you would handle a controversial, complicated issue?
Well, I'd listen to all sides of the issue. I'd listen to staff, see what staff has to say about the issue. I'd also listen to the applicant and see what they have to say and kind of weigh what they're talking about. Then also listen to the public and kind of get all the information gathered before coming to a conclusion. I wouldn't try to listen or take information prior to the public hearing. Make sure that, take all the information to the public hearing, so it's fair and you're not getting something behind the doors or someone's calling you telling you about the project when you really shouldn't be listening about that until it's presented in front of you and all sides are presented. So after it's all presented, then I'd make my decision.
All right, well, with 10 seconds left, I think we can cut the questions off there. So now, Todd, if you can put two minutes back on the clock, if you want, just give us a summary or any other information you think we might need to know.
Just really excited about the opportunity, you know, I've been here before, I've ran for the seat. Really excited about this opportunity. I think I'd be a valued member on the team. Just really excited and I think I could bring a new perspective to the city council that would be compatible and with the other council members.
Great, well, we appreciate your time.
Okay.
Stay tuned for further information. All right, so we, thank you. So we have, we have next, we have Jed.
There?
Yes, sir.
I got to ask three. Did everybody get to ask three?
Wendy. Can we just give Wendy one more? Because then we'd finish.
Well, no.
Well, it's just because we ran out of time.
If you're going to say the same, you're going to.
Yeah.
That's not the reason for my question, just wondering how many questions we were able to.
Yeah, we had. Yeah, well, no, we had, what, six times three, 24?
Wendy didn't get it.
Oh, yeah, minus one, so 23.
You get two questions.
Yeah.
Wendy had two.
Yeah. There's six of you.
My question would be, we'd ask all the same questions, but do we have to do it in the same order? Or are there?
No, as long as you're asking the same questions.
I would think they need to be in the same order because if we run out of time, we want to make sure everybody have the same. So I was keeping track of what, what was asked in what order, if that helps.
So Wendy, you can do two and three-part questions.
Sure, I don't think anybody, I think they're going to be a little.
Yeah, gotcha, yeah, agreed. All right, so welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming and showing your interest and being part of the team. Todd, you can wait till I start talking before you turn that on. So we're going to go around, each council member is going to ask a question. We'll be, as we were talking before, we have 15 minutes to get through as many of those questions as you can. And then you'll have two minutes at the end, so you'll be able to see the clock up there.
Yeah.
All right, so Todd, you can start it when the first question is asked. Sorry. Okay, Mayor Protem.
Hi Jed, question, how have you been preparing yourself for a position on the council?
Oh, gosh, well, I applied at the last vacancy and since then, I've been involved in in-person and online meetings. And I've been watching meetings from different committees and I showed up at the, at the farmer's market and talked with people. Really just trying to familiarize myself with the process and meeting several of you and having discussions just about what, what are the city issues? So I feel like I've done, done a good job preparing. Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you. How do you balance wants versus needs in the city?
I mean, I'm a big Dave Ramsey guy. I feel like we really need to look at the budget and say, you know, do we have the money? Did we save up for this? I think there's a lot of cases where, you know, Dave Ramsey talks a lot about Christmas, right? Well, Christmas comes every year, that's not an emergency, right? So that you don't dip into your emergency fund for that. So as far as, so as far as budgeting goes, I feel like, you know, if there is a demand for something and we have the money or we've set that as a goal and we put the money aside, then, then let's go for it.
Great, all right, Councilmember Dunn.
What are the most important future opportunities for Liberty Lake?
Important future opportunities? Well, I mean, obviously, the future opportunities in just growth and infrastructure. I think the ability to draw in the right businesses that can bring in the revenue that can, you know, sustain that growth. I feel like that's, that's the main thing. And obviously, keeping our city safe, putting dollars towards those core functions of government, particularly in law enforcement, that, you know, when, when people look at Liberty Lake and they see there's zero sex offenders, for instance, that's a big draw, you know? So things like that.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz. All right. What do you hope to contribute to the city council and the larger community if you're appointed? And then are there areas or issues you are interested in focusing on if appointed?
I think the best thing I can offer is the fact that I can collaborate. I can, I've been observing how you guys interact with one another with all the different meetings. I know I can work with you guys. I can listen to other opinions and, and I can ask the right questions. I think that's probably one of the best, one of my best attributes. It's my ability to ask questions that, that draw more out so that, so that we can get down to the nitty-gritty. But as far as the areas of interest, I really enjoy the community engagement part of things, just talking with the people and finding out, well, what, what does the community want? And so, you know, listening to some of the feedback from, from that trailhead event that we just had and listening to what people like, what they don't like, observing what's going on, on, on some of these online forums. You know, hearing what people are saying, I really enjoy that.
Great, Councilmember Salberg.
Welcome, Jed.
Thanks.
How many city council, commission or library meetings have you attended in the last year? And what did you learn from them?
Council committee meetings, so I haven't attended any in-person. Like I said, I've been observing, you know, I've watched a few online. As far as what, what I'm, what I'm seeing from these different meetings is just the the interest or lack thereof. I feel like, again, going back to that engagement, this, this idea, you know, what's, what's going to draw people in that they're actually going to be interested in this? A lot of people frankly just are like, you know, I elected them to do that job, so, you know, go do it, kind of thing. So I think trying to figure out how do, how do we get more people involved?
Great. Councilmember Van Orman.
Hey Jed.
Hello.
All right, so what outside sources do you gain your knowledge from?
What outsides, outside sources? What type of knowledge? Can I ask a follow-up question?
I would think pertaining to this job.
Okay, well, I mean, obviously, the we've got the world at our fingertips. So I I really appreciate the agendas that go out with all the supporting documents. I think that's that's a prime source for a lot of, especially since the city staff works so hard to compile everything together so that we know what things we need to be focusing on. And so I I would, I would say that would be the first place I would start. But, you know, depending on the topic, I'm certainly going to go out onto the internet or, you know, find a specialist on on any given topic, so.
Okay. All right. We often hear from citizens that there are too many apartments in Liberty Lake. How would you address this concern with a resident?
Well, I mean, clearly, you know, if if there the zoning is there, there's not a lot that the the city can do. I I would just say that, you know, everybody wants to live in Liberty Lake. And, you know, given the the housing market at this point, there really isn't a lot of opportunities if 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 you're middle or low income to to get into Liberty Lake, just, you know. So it's a difficult situation, but, yeah, that's probably what I would say.
Great, thank you. All right, we're back up to Mayor Pro Tim.
Perfect, thank you. The council has an aggressive capital improvement improvement projects list. Can you name three current or future projects and the estimated cost?
Okay. Well, trailhead, we're looking at six and a half to to seven before we put some money down, right? So around eight, 8.4 Kramer Parkway. I do not know the the total on that one, it's in the millions. Probably pushing 10, I would think, after it's all said and done. And I I can't name a third one with a cost. Obviously, the the development going, it's Trutina, it's going on up in the River District, but I I don't know the cost on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Jed, if if you were in our position, what question would you ask the city council candidates?
Gosh, what what? That's a, that's a tricky question.
That's why I.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess the question I would ask is why, why are you, why are you wanting to to serve? And what is the top priority of a member of the city council? I don't have to answer the question. I'm just kidding.
All right, Councilmember Dunn.
What are the city's greatest assets and strengths?
I I mean, this, the city's greatest assets as far as property? Or or I I guess I'm going to say the the greatest assets are the the city workers, the 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 city staff. I think they're the ones that are keeping things driving forward. I think the council is very valuable in in that equation because you guys are the ones telling them where to go and what to do. But they're they're coming back. I think that it's a symbiotic relationship, really, the them bringing us information as a council and then we take that information and give it back, so.
Great, Councilmember Kurtz. Okay. This is a nonpartisan position. How would you balance your personal beliefs with your responsibility to be open-minded and to make decisions that you may not personally agree with on behalf of the community?
I I think, yeah, we we have to, we have to make sure that we're doing what's best for the community overall. And sometimes that is going to involve compromise. I I will say that it it's important for us as as a community to do what's in in the best interests financially. And because we don't want to, we don't want to make decisions that are going to cause future generations to have to wonder what were those guys thinking?
All right, Councilmember Solberg.
Jed, if you're not chosen, do you plan to get involved in other ways and if so, how?
Yes, if if I'm not chosen, actually, I hadn't, I hadn't planned on this opportunity popping up again so quickly. My 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 goal was after coming runner-up to Tom, thanks, Tom. My goal at that point was, well, I'll I'll probably just run a campaign next year. There's lots of slots opening up, lots of opportunity. Other than that, I I've just been kind of trying to just determine whether I want to get involved with the committee in the meantime or or just wait until that opportunity comes up to to run next year.
All right. Councilmember Ray Norman.
In your words, what is the role of city government?
What is the role of city government? The role of city government, I I feel like there's a lot of crossover. I I feel like the proper role of government is to secure the rights that we're all given by our creator. To secure those rights and protection of those rights against others outside of our community and within our community.
All right, a little bit of a follow-up to that question.
Sure.
So what is the role of a council, council member versus the role of the mayor in our strong mayor form of government?
So that's a, that's a great question. I and I'm not going to say I know exactly the differentiation, other than the mayor doesn't have a a voting position. And so so you as the mayor are kind of acting in advisory and and of course, tiebreaker situations. But a as a member of the city council, I I feel like it's it's the duty to come, come to the meetings prepared, to collaborate and discuss and come to conclusions, like get get the job done.
Great, thank you. All right, Mayor Pro Tim.
Perfect. The city council will soon be discussing how best to use the ARP funds. What would you, what are your top two or three suggestions?
Top two or three suggestions? I I've heard lots of different varying opinions on this, particularly here on the council. I I think we should use those funds however we deem necessary to move the city forward. And if those funds are going to go towards police cars, I feel like that's an appropriate use of those funds. I feel like if it's ultimately decided that we move forward on projects that are part of the core function of government, that we can take those funds and apply them to those. And that just moves us forward more quickly, whether we, you know, pulling, whether we decide we we need to pull those from general funds or otherwise.
All right, Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Jed, this is a two-part question. What scares you the most about being a city council member? And then on the flip side, what excites you the most?
Okay, that's a funny question. So what scares me the most? I I'm not really, I I think just the idea of that perhaps there's maybe something I don't know about and that that I might get caught off guard. That might be the thing that would scare me the most. I think the thing that excites me the most is just this council idea that, you know, collaboration, talking things through. I I I love being part of councils. We we have lots of councils in 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 our church, for instance, and I love hearing everybody's ideas and then at the end, it all kind of comes together.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Dunn.
Who are the city's most important partners in serving the community?
The most important partners, I would, I would put the law enforcement, assuming that they are in that category. The important partners in serving the city. I would just say city staff in general, everybody who's working on our behalf. I would say also the community organizations. You know, we're talking about the Rotary tonight, about donations. I mean, these organizations that are not only giving their time, but they're also willing to to put some money behind that to, you know, this this traveling wall, I'm extremely excited about. I think that's amazing for our community, so.
Councilmember Kurtz. Great. There are a number of projects the city council is currently working on. Describe how you would balance fiscal stewardship with investment in the community of Liberty Lake.
Again, going back to this zero-based budgeting and saving for for things that we want, you know? Putting money aside for the projects that we want to spend the money on. So I I think we do find ourselves in in some unique situations here with all of the projects that are going on and we're already invested to a certain extent in some of these projects. So we, yeah, there's, there's going to be some balance, you know? But I I would say on a going-forward basis, we really need to look at, okay, if this is something we want to do and it's going to take us 10 years to save up for, I'd rather put the money away and save up for it rather than perhaps go into debt for that.
All right, real quick, Councilmember Solberg.
Real quick, what's your approach to deciding and handling controversial or complicated issues?
I do this all the time. Well, I guess not, not hugely controversial, but I deal with situations at work, you know? Where, you know, somebody's dropped the ball some somewhere down the line. And so, again, going back to this idea, asking questions, where where did this, where did this fall off the rails? What what things can we do to get it back on? Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry, no worries.
So now you've got two minutes to fill us in on anything else you'd like us to know.
Okay, I appreciate it.
That or do what you want to do.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mayor, and and hopefully soon to be fellow city council members. I appreciate the opportunity that I've had to to come again this evening and and chat with you guys a little bit. I think we're all sad that that former council member Jamie Baird left. She was a great voice on the council. Loved in the community. It was unfortunate that she had to had to go, but I I think we can agree that it it was for a good reason. It's it's kind of nice to have some family around when you got a little one. So we've we've, we've got family close ourselves as well. I met her for the first time the the night I applied the last time. And afterward, it was afterwards that she said, hey, you know, thanks for, thanks for coming and stay involved. And and I and I said, yeah, I I will do that. And and I feel like I have been very involved since then. And and that I was, in fact, I was here the night that she announced that she was stepping down. And and I told her on the way out, I said, well, I might, I might, you know, apply for that position. And 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 so she, so she recommended that I do that and 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 she's supporting me in this, so so I really appreciate that. I I just look forward to the opportunity to possibly serve with you guys here on the council. I know I can do a good job coming prepared with researching the topics that that we're going to be talking about and having that collaborative spirit. And and I I think that's important to have that diversity of of thought in on this council. And I have seen that so far, and I think I can contribute to that, so.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right. All right, go, go relax a little bit and we've got our next one coming in, who's Linda and Keith is on deck. Yeah. Yeah, we did pretty good.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Linda? Yes?
I really liked the variety of questions over this time.
Yeah. How we always ask these questions. Some good ones. Okay. All right, you want to wait till he has that fire? Yeah. Hi. Do you just make sure the door's shut so when he walks by, he doesn't hear? Okay. All right, well, welcome, Linda. Good to see you. Good to see you. And thanks for, thanks for joining us. So we have a series of questions to ask. Each each one will ask one, then we'll go back around for a couple more rounds. You'll have 15 minutes to get through as many of those questions as you can. And then and the timer will be up here. And then at the end, you'll have an additional two minutes to give us a summary or tell us anything additionally you'd like us to know. Okay. All right, so we're going to go ahead and start off with Mayor Pro Tim Follier.
Perfect, hi there. So my question is, how have you been preparing yourself for a position on the council?
How long have I been preparing myself?
How ha- how have you been preparing yourself?
Well, I started to read the handbook online. And I didn't get through it all because I left on a little trip that had been planned. But that was primarily how I was preparing for this.
Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Linda, welcome.
Hi.
How do you balance wants versus needs?
How do I balance wants versus needs? Well, needs come first if you're talking about my own family home budget, for example. Yeah, I have to deal with what has to be taken care of first. Wants. There's not much that I really want for, except for I do like to get out of town every now and then. So that's primarily what I do, you know? We can escape, yeah.
All right, Councilmember Dunn.
What are the most important future opportunities for Liberty Lake?
Sensible growth, you know? I think that that's one of the main reasons I wanted to apply for this, or I guess apply is the right word. I've only been here four years, which, talking to the other candidates, they've been here a lot longer. But since I moved here, it's just grown exponentially. And it's, it's a little bit frightening. And I want to make sure that the city grows responsibly. And made, for example, I built a house, a cottage in Liberty, Aaron Rocky Hill. And initially, I had a view of Mount Spokane. Within less than a year, it's gone because of homes. And, you know, I understand, you know, people need to live somewhere, but it's just happening very, very fast.
All right, Councilmember Kurtz. All right. What do you hope to contribute to the city council and the larger community if you're appointed? And the second part of that is, are there are are there areas or issues you're interested in focusing on if you're appointed?
Right. Okay, well, again, responsible growth and the opportunity for affordable housing and for the city to be family-friendly, for, you know, welcoming to everyone. I did, I was in real estate for 20 years, so I have a pretty good understanding of construction and infrastructure. And I've been out of real estate for 20 years as well because I had a second career. But it stuck with me, you know? And like I said, I just see things happening very rapidly here. And so I think responsible growth is is the main issue that I'm concerned about. Did that answer your question? Was there a second part that I'm blanking on because I'm nervous?
I think you answered the second part. And then I guess the first part was, is there anything that you hope to contribute to the city council and the larger community if you're appointed?
Just hopefully bringing my, you know, my background, my experience to the table. I do understand, you know, how taxes contribute to funding. And I also, I guess I should include here, my second career was as a journalist. And I covered city councils in other cities. And so I I have a good understanding of how how it works, just from being at many, many council meetings and taking copious notes, so.
All right, so that leads right into Councilmember Solberg's question.
Hey Linda. How many city council commission or library meetings have you attended in the last year?
In the last year?
In the last year. And what did you learn from them?
I haven't been to any library meetings because I usually just buy books. And I have not been to more than a handful of city council meetings.
Did you learn anything from them?
Oh, always. But as I said, I covered city councils, I covered city council in Isaguac and Sumamish for for several years. And I kind of burned out on going to meetings for a while.
Anything you learned from our meetings?
I came to the Trailhead Open House and learned about what is happening with that. And I do read The Splash because I used to write for it. So I read Craig's synopsis.
Hey, Councilmember Ray Norman.
Which brings us right into this question. Hi, Linda.
Hi.
What outside sources do you gain your knowledge from?
In terms of?
In terms of?
Newspapers or?
Outside sources that you'd be utilizing in this position.
Well, as a former journalist, I subscribe to a couple of different newspapers and a couple of different. Well, as a former journalist, I subscribe to a couple different newspapers and a couple different newsletters from various people, so that's where I get a lot of my information. I take the Seattle Times still. I read the Spokes and Review, I read the Liberty Lake Splash. I read, and I don't think it's necessary that I, you know, divulge exactly which newsletters I subscribe to, but I do read a lot.
Sounds great.
Okay.
All right, so we often hear from citizens that there are too many apartments in Liberty Lake. How would you address this concern with a citizen?
Hmm. Well. I would respond to people if, if that was controversial to them. I would explain the council's position, if there was a position being taken, for example, on a new apartment building going up or being, you know, someone applying to build an apartment building, and if that was perceived as negative by somebody, I would imagine it would be discussed in council, and I would defer to the entire council's decision because it's not just me, it's, it's the council. Personally, I don't think there are too many apartments because I had to live in an apartment here while I was building my house, and it was you know, wasn't, there wasn't a lot to choose from. Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, we're back to Mayor Pro Tim.
Perfect, thank you. So the council has an aggressive capital improvement projects list. Can you name three current or future projects and the estimated cost?
I couldn't tell you the estimate, well, oh, the estimated cost, of course, of Trailhead is six point four, I think. Or was it nine point four? I might be flipping the number around. And then, of course, the new Overpass and the Kramer Parkway project. And let's see, what was the other one? Henry Road improvements, but I couldn't tell you the cost of those two.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, Councilmember Cargill, we're back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of a different type of question here. If you were in our position, what question would you be asking the candidates?
Well, I would be asking, you know, what their background was, which you haven't asked me, but I've told you, you know, so just to see what they've done in their life. And, you know, I feel like I've had two lengthy careers and, you know, that I've done the best I can at both of them, and right now, I'm just working part-time because I'm kind of semi-retired. And, you know, I have the time and the desire and the respect to do something like this.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Dunn.
What are the city's greatest assets and strengths?
Well, the greatest asset in this city is low crime, it's quiet. There's three golf courses. Yeah, that's three of them right there. Yeah, it's just, it's quiet, it's safe, and there's lots of golf. Good parks, good parks, definitely, yeah.
All right, Councilmember Kurtz.
This is a nonpartisan position. How would you balance your personal beliefs with your responsibility to be open-minded and to make decisions that you may not personally agree with on behalf of the community?
Yeah, I recognize it's nonpartisan. So how would I base my decisions? Is that what you said?
Let's see, how would you balance your personal beliefs with your responsibility to be open-minded and to make decisions you may not personally agree with on behalf of the community?
Right, right. Again, if, if my vote or my belief is not in sync with the rest of the council, I recognize that it's not an individual thing, you know, that this is a group, and I would go along with the decision. You know, I may go home and fume, but I wouldn't do it here.
Thanks. All right, Councilmember Solberg.
If you're not chosen, do you plan to get involved in other ways? And if so, how?
Yeah, if I'm not chosen, I might consider running for the 2023 election because there's seven seats open, as I understand it. Yep, that's a lot.
Yeah, six plus.
Six.
Yeah, we have six council and mayor.
Right.
Yep. All right, Councilmember Van Orman.
So you've been to quite a few. What is the role of city council or city government?
What is the role?
What is the role?
Of city council?
Of the city government.
Establish local laws and policies and establish a budget.
All right, so quick follow-up to that one. What is the role of a council member versus the role of the mayor in our strong mayor form of government?
Well, you're the boss, we're not. And I did get so, well, see. You're, you're the executive, okay? We are not. So you're the one who was, who would be interfacing, for example, with the city attorney, not us. Anything that has to do with that any kind of a legal situation is not discussed. I, I don't go right to, I'm sorry, I can't read his name. I don't go talk to him directly, you know, so no, I understand that we are here to guide, provide framework, and, but we are not the ultimate decision maker.
Right, we're back to Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes, thank you. So the city council will soon be discussing how best to use the ARP funds. What would be your top two or three suggestions?
It would be nice to see some more small, small business space. It seems like a lot of the businesses that are coming into Liberty Lake are huge companies. In fact, I don't know, we were talking back there, rumors, you know, but I'd like to see more small business here. And how, how that would work, I don't know, but I just think it's, it's, we have Itron, we have this new gigantic screw factory next door to where I work now, and we just need something more mom and pop-like area. Does that answer your question for small business?
Sure, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. What's, this is a two-part question. What scares you the most about becoming a council member, if anything? And then the follow-up, or on the flip side, what excites you the most?
It doesn't really scare me. I mean, there's going to be a learning curve, obviously, but I'm not scared because I've had to learn new things many times in my life. Yeah, and what I'm most excited about being a change for good.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Dunn.
Who are the city's most important partners in serving the community?
Fire and police.
Okay, next we have Councilmember Kurtz.
There are a number of projects the city council is currently working on. Describe how you would balance fiscal stewardship with investment in the community of Liberty Lake.
Can you repeat that, please?
Sure. There are a number of projects the city council is currently working on. Describe how you would balance fiscal stewardship with investment in the community of Liberty Lake.
What do you mean by fiscal stewardship?
Fiscal, like financial?
Oh, fiscal. Oh, I thought you said physical. I'm sorry, what am I supposed to be doing? Okay, again, can you repeat the question then, since I didn't hear you right?
So the second part, describe how you would balance fiscal stewardship with investment in the community of Liberty Lake.
I don't really have an answer to that question, I'm sorry. Yeah.
And so we've got thirteen seconds left, so we'll just go ahead and stop the questions there. Now you've got two minutes to tell us anything else that you would like us to know about you, or how would you, how you would do things.
Well, let's see, I know there's been several vacancies, you know, repeatedly because of people moving. I know I've only been here four years, but I moved, I, I'd lived in Coeur d'Alene before, but then I was in Seattle. I mean, I've just kind of gone back and forth, but I'm staying here because I now have a grandson who is just a little over a year old, about a half hour away, so I'm going nowhere, absolutely nowhere. I have the time and I have the desire to, to do this, so. And again, I do think that my two different careers have given me, you know, a lot of knowledge on city government. I have respect for people who serve and how they come to their decisions. And I think my experience as a reporter can help me make informed decisions. I'm not afraid to talk to strangers. I had to do it a lot as a journalist and as a real estate broker. So I'm not, you know, I don't fear being engaged by like the public, like if I was at the farmer's market or whatever. This is more nerve-wracking for me. Is, and, and, you know, if something is controversial, I'll just listen, you know, I mean, if somebody's got a problem, I'll listen to them. I had, you know, selling real estate, you know, I heard a lot of stories. And same with journalism, they were both different careers, but very much the same because it's a lot of people interaction, well, it's all people interaction. Also, I'm a very good writer. I think. I write better than I talk.
We're gonna have to stop you there.
Okay.
And sorry about that.
Yeah.
You know, good use of your time, and just stay tuned for the next steps.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And we've got Keith up next, and as long as I've known him, I did not know his first name was Lawrence.
Is that the first time Sean has ever gotten a shout-out during these interviews?
Yes, the answer to that question, yes. How much did that cost? Nothing, actually, I was surprised you heard my name. Yeah, I thought it was his brother. Through downstairs.
I'm, I pass him now, then, I pass him now, and it's only work, I'm gonna have to start calling him Larry.
Hi, everybody.
Sorry, I had to do.
Hi.
Hello, welcome, Keith. Good to see you. So for those of you who don't never mind, for some reason, I didn't see your first name on here before. I thought you'd just like put your application in as Lawrence. Anyway, so we've got fifteen minutes for you. We're gonna go around, each council member is going to ask one question, so you have fifteen minutes. We got through not quite three rounds of questions, so just keep that in mind. And at the end of your fifteen minutes, you'll have two minutes to do a wrap-up or whatever else you want to tell us.
Awesome.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and start with Mayor Pro Tim.
Great, thank you. So my first question is, how have you been preparing yourself for a position on the council?
I've been watching some old city council meetings, reading, you know, I'm somewhat familiar with what's going on on a general level. But once I decided I wanted to get back onto the council, I just went back in time and just kind of keeping up on what's going on and you know, not digging into make a vote worthy, but just keeping up with what was going on.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Keith, welcome. How do you balance wants versus needs in the city?
Well, you know, we have a fiscal responsibility as a council member, and I'm sure that's what you're referring to. You know, we want everything, you know, we, a certain way, but it's not real practical to, to, to take care of, you know, all your wants, the needs are the basic needs, you have, you know, roads and all the infrastructure, everything, you know, that we, we or, you know, it's a no-brainer that we know what we need. But, you know, back when, I know they were looking at a swimming pool, a lot of people, oh, we want a swimming pool, we want a swimming pool, and it was hard being on the council and saying no to some of that because it was just exploding into a tremendous expense. And you look at, you know, a short season, how many people Liberty Lake would actually take advantage of it? It just didn't seem like the right thing to do. I mean, I think everybody who voted no for it wanted it, but it wasn't the right thing to do for the city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dunn.
What are the most important future opportunities for Liberty Lake?
Future opportunities? Well, the basics, you know, fill up the rest of the land that is happening up on the, in the River District. Businesses that are coming in, I think that you know, we're seeing more and more and more come in and, you know, taking up the land that's industrial land. It's just, we're capped out with size, we're getting there where we need to be. I'm, you know, I'm a big believer in, in growth and, and all that, but I, I like Liberty Lake the way it was, I like the way it is today. And we, I would want to keep going in that direction as far as, you know, the standards of what we, you know, expect from our city and what our constituents expect from us.
Councilmember Kurtz.
All right. What do you hope to contribute to the city council and the larger community if you're appointed? And the second part, are there areas or issues that you're interested in focusing on if appointed?
I focus on the second one, but I want to just repeat the first one.
Uh, we'll do the first one. What do you hope to contribute to the city council and the larger community if you're appointed?
My contribution would be is I, I know a lot of people in the town, so I feel like I have great interaction with people. And when we're looking at different issues, people came to me and I sought, sought out people to discuss, you know, what's, what's happening in the city. The contribution would be is, I look at everything from a standpoint of what's best for the community, not necessarily what Keith wants. There's a lot of things that I wanted, but I couldn't vote that way because it wasn't the right thing for the city overall. It didn't make sense for the majority of the citizens.
And the second part was, are there areas or issues you're interested in focusing on if appointed?
A fiscal responsibility, I mean, that's number one. I get real concerned when projects are thought of, they get started and they snowball into gigantic, you know, expenses, and you almost kind of get obligated to it early on. And then as you move on, you're like, well, we might as well spend the extra, you know, I'm not saying how I vote on the ongoing thing, but I like to know what upfront, what, my interest is what the real plan is, and who's behind the plan, and, you know, why does it benefit the city? So.
Councilmember Solberg.
Hey Keith, good to see you.
All right, thank you.
How many city council commission or library meetings have you attended in the last year?
I, I, oh, sorry.
And what did you learn from them?
Okay. In the last year, I had just moved back to Liberty Lake and hadn't got re-involved in city dealings. I was, you know, excited to be back in Liberty Lake, but I was focusing mostly on my career, my service work in other areas. I, you know, was pretty much focusing on that, and when I did make the decision, I went back in time and watched the council meeting, so that if, if I was chosen, I'd be able to jump right in, and having the previous city council experience, I'd just jump right in and take care of a short-term situation. Back in, back in some time, there was a short time that I was on just helping out because, you know, some logistical issues with the election, and then before that, but I, I would be ready to go in two weeks, I really felt comfortable with.
Right, Councilmember Van Orman.
Hi.
Hi.
What outside sources do you gain your knowledge from?
Outside sources? Everywhere. I mean, every experience that I have, I gain something from it, it might be a good thing or a bad thing. But as far as what influences me, I give everybody a fair shake. And action speaks louder than words in a lot of cases, but I, I enjoy just getting all the information I can get, like a sponge, and, you know, sorting it out and unpacking it once I'm, you know, deliberating on what to do about any particular issue.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
What's that?
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Right. We often hear from citizens that there are too many apartments in Liberty Lake. How would you address this concern with a resident?
Well, specifically to that issue, I would, I would try to identify what their, their reason for not wanting something and talk about good and bad things about that particular issue. But, you know, if I can take a second and tell you about an incident I had at the wall, at Safeway, when I was waiting in line at the pharmacy. The person in front of me was just going off on the, the pharmacist about how stupid council was, and this bad-mouthing all of them. And I kind of stopped there, like, okay, you know, and then pharmacist was so kind to say, well, why don't you address it to the I kind of stopped there like, okay, you know, and then pharmacist was so kind to say, well, why don't you address it to the council member that's standing behind you? So I had a, I had a fun talk for thirty minutes probably, and and after explaining our positioning on things and what was really happening versus rumor, um, she was like shaking my hand saying, I'm really sorry, that was, you know, completely uh, not the case.
Nice job. Okay, we are back to Mayor Pro Tim.
Uh, yes. Uh, the council has an aggressive capital improvements projects list. Can you name three current or future projects and the estimated cost?
Sure. We've got the golf course and that's uh, what we saw today. It's six point nine, I think, is what you uh, agreed upon. There's the uh, um, there's some public works office, uh, I want to say twelve, but I don't remember offhand exactly what that was. Am I close?
That's okay.
That's my answer. Um, and uh, what else? Spot here a little bit. I guess that's the point of it though. Right off the top of my head, I can't think of, oh, I will the Kramer.
There you go.
Over, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, councilmember Cargill.
Keith, if you were in our position, what question would you ask the candidates or the applicants?
I think motivation as to what your expectations are, what you're willing to bring to the council, what you're, how much work you're willing to put into it. It's not two meetings a week. It's a lot more than that. And I'd want to dig into a little bit about, um, you know, the why and the, you know, and and what what your expectations are.
Thank you.
All right, councilmember Dunn.
Uh, what are the city's greatest assets and strengths?
Well, we have a lot of them. The greatest assets, it's a community, I think. Yeah, I would say the community would be our biggest asset and the ability to uh, decide how this city was to grow. And, you know, being here for uh, eighteen years, um, it's come a long way. And uh, you know, we've had struggles along the way, but um, the infrastructure, I think, is outstanding. You know, it's uh, beautiful and it's a great place to live, work, and play. I think I've heard that somewhere before.
All right, um, councilmember Kurtz, this is a nonpartisan position. How would you balance your personal beliefs with your responsibility to be open minded and to make decisions that you may not personally agree with on behalf of the community?
That's not a problem for me. Um, this is not the world according to Keith. It's, you know, there's a lot of people involved in this situation here. And listening to all sides and then deliberating yourself is great. It's not the key show. But it's a group of seven of us that make the uh, legislative decisions, policy plans. We handle the money. I I have often have views, like personal views of things that I wouldn't do if it were just, you know, my kingdom. But um, working with everybody else and hearing all the uh, um, the, getting all the information and doing my research, make the best decisions I can for the community, and that's really the main focus.
Right, councilmember Solberg.
Keith, if you're not chosen, do you plan to get involved in other ways? And if so, how?
Absolutely. For one thing, um, if I don't get picked tonight, I'm gonna run again because I really would like to be on the council. I feel like I can bring a lot to it with both my experience and just uh, you know, my, my being ingrained into the community. Um, but I do all kinds of volunteer work and I kind of cleared some things up for me for uh, this potential situation. But um, you know, I was uh, president on the Rotary Club. I'd probably get back into Rotary Club or the Kiwanis perhaps then. But uh, you know, and I was president of the Rotary Club for a while. I love just giving my time up in between things. It helps me, you know, my job is important, but it's very flexible and I can do things that um, some people can't do when they're working, you know, full time, um, you know, as far as time commitment and being able to uh, be available for different things.
Councilmember Van Orman.
What is the role of city government?
Well, the city council role is to be responsible for um, policy and the money. And the mayor is responsible for what you could consider, I think, the executive branch of our large government, um, all the inner workings of it based on the recommendations from us.
Right, well, you just must have liked been reading over my shoulder because my question was going to be,
Oh.
What's the role of a council member versus the role of mayor in our strong form, strong mayor form of government? So if you want to answer more, great, if not, we can skip to the next. Okay.
Thank you for your question.
No problem, Councilmember Pro Tim.
Uh, yeah, sorry. Uh, the city council will soon be discussing how best to use the ARP funds. Uh, what are you, what would be your top two or three suggestions?
I'd have to dig into it a little more. I'm not, I wouldn't be real excited about announcing how I would vote for things, there's things I would bring up into the council, but I need to do definitely some more research on what's been talked about already, where the direction it's going, what obligations do we have, and uh, and make my decisions based on that. I wasn't in the position for long to, you know, be part of, you know, what's been going on.
Sure, thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Keith, is this, is there anything about being a city council member that scares you? And then the flip side of the question is, what excites you the most about being back on the council?
Well, I'll take the second part of it first. The interaction with not only the other council members, but the community. Um, I love getting out there and talking to people and having relationships, both from a business standpoint and a personal relationship with them, and then taking that and building it into being, you know, working with the council to do what we believe are the right things. I think uh, you know, we, uh, beginning of each meeting, council members, we do have an invocation and we ask God to help us make the best decisions for the city. And that's my prayer every time that I get put in that situation.
Thank you.
Right, councilmember Dunn.
Um, who are the city's most important partners in serving our community?
The partners, it, police department, fire department, public works, the city staff, everybody. Everybody works together and has very much of a big impact on what happens in the city. And um, there's always been great team members here and it's, it's run very well. Um, they have a hiccup once in a while, but that gets worked out pretty quickly, I think.
Okay, councilmember Kurtz, if you want to run through quick. There are a number of projects that the city council is currently working on. Describe how you would balance fiscal stewardship with investment in the community of Liberty Lake.
How would balance it? Um, in personal time, just follow up on the question.
Um, in the position.
Oh, in the position, how would balance it? I think just uh, there's common sense. There's um, actual numbers, math doesn't lie, and math is math. Um, there's the desire of whether something should be done or not, and balancing it all those, it's not, you know, it's not a fifty fifty type situation. You have to kind of build it up and, oh, sorry.
No, that's okay, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Catch off.
I, it, it's balanced.
All right, so now you have two additional minutes, so if you want to finish answering or just take two minutes to tell us a little more about yourself.
I appreciate the opportunity to stand in front of you all and explain why I think that I would be a great addition to the city council. Um, I definitely feel like I contribute different, not different all the times, but I I put opposing views out there sometimes and I'm proud to, you know, stand behind that and and debate my thoughts behind it. What I've concluded that was, you know, the right thing to do, but once the decision's made, I go a hundred percent behind it. It's made, we're gonna do it, let's, let's do it right, and let's make sure everybody's supported in that effort to do it. Um, I don't need to have to be here as city council. I I really want to be. It was one of the things I thought of when I sold, I moved to Alderweireld for, you know, three years and then moved back. I was so excited to move back because, you know, I thought I could get more involved in the community instead of being up on a farm up there. So, but I appreciate everybody's consideration and I hope, you know, I have no doubt that you guys are gonna pick the right candidate or certainly a good candidate um, for this position. So uh, you know, more power to you and uh, appreciate the opportunity up here.
Right, thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Yeah, I saw. All right, we're gonna have to wait a moment for our next candidate. He's walked that way.
Mayor, after, um, after the next candidate, can we take a short break?
Oh, okay.
Great, thank you.
You got, you got the bum chair.
Guys give this one to me every time.
When the new chairs come. Um.
When I know they know, I never even know. Feel like I'm going. Yeah.
We're, we're buying our chairs from Chipotle? I didn't even know they sold chairs.
Gotcha.
All right.
Give you a cushion stand on.
I did do that.
Sometimes after a while, you know, it's harder.
Yeah.
It's kind of hard to stand on this.
It's exactly. It was just better.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, well.
All right.
I don't think about it till I actually even do it, so it's.
So he's gonna grab something and head in here. Okay. All right, welcome.
Hello again.
Thanks for joining us.
Well, thank you.
All right, so um, as you heard us before, we got fifteen minutes. We're gonna go around. Each council member is gonna ask a question, then we'll head back around again. Um, and then after the fifteen minutes is up, you'll have two minutes to summarize or use that time however you wish. All right.
Very good, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna start off with Mayor Pro Tim.
Great, thank you. Hi, Mike. Uh, question, how have you been preparing yourself for a position on the council?
I can easily go back, say, ten to twelve years, being prepared, and that's by being involved on different committees. Uh, I go back ten years on trailhead meetings alone, uh, looking at how we were gonna do something with trailhead. So my prep started a long time ago, not to mention the last four and a half years as a council member.
Perfect, thank you.
Right, councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, thanks for being here. Uh, how do you uh, balance uh, wants versus needs in the city?
Well, depends on who you're gonna ask on that. You can ask a citizen, what do you want? And they'll tell you, then you ask them, what do you, tell them what they need, and you're, you're not gonna do very well on it. The needs of the city to me are very, very simple. We have basic needs and that's uh, public safety, security, roads, maintenance, things of that sort there. Those are things that every citizen pays taxes for to be able to have that. Then some of the, the ones come after that is I'd like, I want a pool, I want a bigger trailhead, I want things of this sort here which come into play, which should they be considered? Absolutely. I've always felt that any citizen comes forwards with a request, we need to take it seriously. Same way when I was on the council, my attitude was always the same. If a council member comes to the council with anything they want to discuss, I always voted yes, let's put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Dunn.
Um, what are the most important future opportunities for Liberty Lake?
Opportunities beyond roads, trailhead, expansion here.
And imagine what is important and what we need to accomplish.
Economic development. Economic development and understanding financial economic development. And what goes along with that is that the primary thing I've always felt the council needs to focus on. I believe this before I was a council member. I believe this as a council member. I believe this now as a citizen. I will believe it if I'm reappointed back to this, and that's what's on that wall right there. Our primary responsibility is the budget and understanding the budget. When I was running the first time, I had a couple people who would run council members and say, when you get up, what you want to say is public safety is number one for you. I got up and said budget is number one for me, because if I understand budget, if the council understands budget and that becomes a focus that we understand, we will never ever fall short on public safety, roads, maintenance, or anything else.
Right.
Good question.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Annie.
What do you hope to contribute to the city council and the larger community if you're appointed? And then I have a second part after that.
Okay. I like that question. Uh, to do exactly what I've been doing the last four and a half years and prior to that, being involved in this city, is that I was an individual who was elected in two thousand seventeen and re-elected in two thousand twenty-one. In that period of time, I never missed a single meeting, never. I don't care what the health situation was, knee surgery, cancer, I made a point that I had, I showed up, I was involved on it. I never came to this council without being prepared on what's on the agenda, and my criteria was always the same. I never changed the color on this, is that when I approached everything as being a council member and being on committees, was four very clear things for me. What is the ordinance, resolution, policy, or procedure? Those are the four things that dictated me as a council member. I'm not saying for other council members. I'm saying for me, that everything that I looked at, that I had to spend money on or make a vote, came down to first thing I looked at, excuse me, was there was an ordinance, resolution, policy, or procedure that dictated the direction I need to go.
The second part of the question, are there areas or issues you're interested in focusing on at point?
I would say there's not as strong as interests. This is gonna shock some individuals. As the involvement I had before, when I was elected on council, I immediately became representative to the STA. I became backup on every single committee. Uh, I've worked along with three mayors since I've been on the, here, and I've been a backup every single time when one of those mayors couldn't attend something. Before I was ever mayor pro tem, they usually turned to me, can I show up for a meeting? And the reason why is not only that I believe I was prepared that, but I had the time. Because being a council member, most of people don't realize, it's a time commitment. And there are a lot of things, if you're working in eight to five, you can't attend a lot of the things. And it just, it just goes with that. So I was in a position where my job schedule, the companies that I own, is that I could do that time anytime. So it allowed me during the day to attend some of these things. The thing I'm encouraged by is that seeing council members who are getting more involved. And the benefit to that, that's a team effort, and that's what I strive for, is to be part of a team. There's something we're going in the right direction. Not that we're going seven or eight different locations, but we're going in one direction. That's important.
Councilmember Solberg.
Welcome back, Mike. Thank you.
I have to ask you this question the same as I ask everybody. How many city council, commission, or library meetings have you attended in the last year? And what did you learn from them?
Well, uh, none, as many in the last three months.
Last year.
In the last year, I, as I, I reiterate what I said earlier, I never missed a council meeting. Uh, in the last four and a half years that I did serve, uh, there was really never a weekend that either Chris, myself, or some other council member wasn't at farmer's market. I love farmer's market. I absolutely love farmer's market. Why? Because it was the one place I could go and really connect with the citizens, even the people who live here and the people that don't on it. So the other meetings are pretty consistent at all of those. As a matter of fact, I know I'm consistent because when I look around the Zoom and the meetings I'm in, generally, I'm the only one there.
Right, councilmember Van Orman.
Hi, Mike.
Hi.
Uh, what outside sources do you gain your knowledge?
Both. Great question. AWC, American, AWC, American Association of Washington Cities, MRSC. Uh, those are critical to me when I, before I ever got elected, because I had council members and individuals of Spokane, where I was on the planning commission for years, would say is that when you get yourself elected, you may be really good at business, Mike, you might be a wizard, but when it comes to council, you don't have squat for knowledge. So you need to start zeroing in, working to get that training. For me, I started getting involved with AWC. AWC has an excellent program to take individuals who are council members, never been in this position before, and learn what the responsibility is. They have a two-fold program, one after a certain period of time of thirty hours credit. You get one level and then at the maximum is sixty hours credit, and that's advanced training. That's a maximum training you can get. As of, into February this year, I had a hundred and forty- As of, end of February this year, I had 140 some odd credits. Now, why did I go so far over the 60? Not because I wanted the credits, I wanted the knowledge. It's knowledge that helps me make the decisions. Thank you for that question.
All right. We often hear from citizens that there are too many apartments in Liberty Lake. How would you address this concern with a resident?
Yes, there are too many apartments. That's really not the issue, I think, that a lot of people want to say. I think why sometimes they say that is because of the image they think there are too many. As a rule of thumb, and most people aren't gonna like this, they're not gonna understand it. But when it comes down to what the city can do and what we can improve in zoning and stuff, there's a certain percentage, you know, somewhere like a 30, 30, 30, of so much green space, so many residential, and so much multi-homes, which would be apartments. What I remember some years ago, that the number at the time was about, you don't want more than like 30, 31% of multifamily apartments in it. I think at the time, I think we were at 28 or 29%. I don't know where we are now, but I think it's important to try to make that balance there. The same way we try to make the balance of what type of businesses we encourage to come to this town.
Okay, all right, back up to Mayor Pro Tem.
Perfect, thank you. The council has an aggressive capital improvement projects list. Can you name three current or future projects and the estimated cost?
Say that again.
The council has an aggressive capital improvement projects list. Can you name three current or future projects and the estimated cost?
Yeah, good luck with that one. Especially on the estimated cost. Because for the most part, when we look at estimated costs, such as when we were doing Orchard Park, and such as we're doing at the storage facility over here, we come up with estimates and we never, we don't hit them. Not on some of those big numbers. The same thing has happened to us on Trailhead on it. There's good because of cost overruns, things of the sort here. Some of the things coming up in the future of dealing with is, is future expansion or additional roads, things of the sort here. Those are some of the things that we can get away from. I think right now, because of some of the hot buttons you hear on social media, where the discussion is Trailhead, things of that sort there. What we're looking at, that I think is critical, is what we're gonna do with this building. We gonna expand this, we're gonna do something with it? Or do we have to move something else as a library and also the police department? What happens with those buildings? Those are huge capital outlays that we need to be conscientious of and moving forward. Because as we grow some of these facilities, we're gonna outgrow. So it's better that we be preemptive, start talking about those things and decide where we're going to go instead of being managed by crisis. Managed by crisis to me is that suddenly we're there and we're scurrying around trying to find the money. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. If, if you were in our position, Mike, what question would you ask the applicants?
I wouldn't ask a softball question like, why do you wanna run? Because what we're forcing individuals to say is that, well, I wanna give back to the community. The question would be, what are you going to do? What are you gonna do? Do you know what the requirements are? Do you know what it takes to get ready for a meeting? Some individuals I talked to who are interested in running, and I'll use this group for an example. Other than Councilman Dunn and Chris Kaminski, prior to any of you running, I sat down and talked to you before you ever committed to run. Because what I tried to do is what I did in the city of Spokane. There was a group of us that went around and talked to individuals and say, this is what it's going to take. This is what the job is. I think what happens a lot, and I'm sitting in the room right now with four other individuals, who I think are very sharp, very sharp. And they really wanna serve, they wanna get involved. And a couple of them are saying, well, I've applied two or three times, I didn't get it, maybe I shouldn't. What I say to them is that, run again. Get involved, you've got a voice. Use that voice, but understand what you're getting involved with. Because you're gonna be making decisions that you're gonna have residents are gonna hate you for. Because one, they don't understand that your decisions, my decisions in the council were ruled by those four things. Ordinance, resolution, policy, procedure. That's what the citizens, they'll attack you anywhere they can. Because one, they mean well, but they don't understand.
Councilmember Dunn.
What are the city's greatest assets and strengths?
Oh. Another great question. Our staff. It's not our parks, it's not our roads, it's nothing that's out there. It's our staff that we put together. And it's the funds that we come in from our main sources of, of the real estate excise tax rate and property tax and these other things that come in. And we are temporary in this position. But if you read the, over there, our responsibility is very, very simple, what we're desired to do. But we have to rely on the staff and the qualifications of good staff to run the day-to-day. We have to be able to understand, how do we work with them? Not so much for them, or to pamper them, but to expect things out of them. It's like budget. Budget is a big thing for me. And, and because I talk about it, I irritate people. Because with budget, we discovered that Trailhead never made money in 17 years or so. And people get upset because that was brought forward. In reality, I was excited to see where we were with Trailhead. Because as Mayor Pro Tem said earlier, and I bought in this a long time ago, we're paying $135,000 a year to pay for that debt. So in my mind, I'm always prepared to spend $135,000 to do something with Trailhead. But it's the staff we have to work with and get qualified people there. We've had more turnover in the last two years than we've had for a long period of time. So what we get, and also with council, so what we have to have is that nucleus of council, working with staff, not standing back saying, it's not my job. But saying, you know what, what can I do to help you, to help me do my job?
Like, time's up. So you've got two minutes to give us, tell us whatever else you want to add or not.
I, I'll close very simply. Great questions. Some of the better questions I've ever heard since I've been around the council. I like the format, it's very, very good. There's nothing that I can say that's gonna convince anybody to vote for me. You've already made up your mind. That's already made up. There's nothing I'm gonna say gonna make a difference. And I can say is that the citizens voted me in 2017, and I've done my job. I showed up for every meeting, I was prepared, and I was knowledgeable, and I'm committed, continue going forward with that. What's flattering to me is I understand that there suddenly was a group, individuals started going out saying, write a support to Mike Kennedy to the council, that he should be in that position. I'm flattered by that. But you know the thing I'm most flattered by, that may surprise you, is that this council, because you voted for me since I've been on this council, to be the STA rep on many occasions, because I had the ability to show up for the meetings, and I showed up for 90% of them. You had the ability to say, we're gonna, you're gonna be the, our point person for Spokane Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I showed up for all those meetings. They're gonna be our point person to show up for GSI, and I showed up for them. And also on two occasions, this group said, other than the positions we have, we need somebody to be mayor pro tem, who can show up and work with the mayor. You voted twice for me in that position. I am most honored by that, equally as I'm honored by the citizens that put me here.
Thank you. All right, so I know we had, you'd asked for, for a break after interviews, but can we do citizen comments first? Thanks, Mike, if you wanna, I guess we can bring everybody back in at this point. And then we're gonna take citizen comments, and then we'll take a break and then executive session. All right. Yeah. Yeah, well, no, so it's all, just wait till everybody gets back in here. Because only one of the citizen comments that can invite, you know, has to be put in the record, so Kelsey's got, got that. Well, oh, you mean for executive session? All right, is everybody settled back in? All right, so before we, we adjourn to a quick break and to executive session, just want to open up for any citizen comments on, on the interviews. So if anybody on Zoom wants to, to speak up, or anybody here in council chambers, just let us know. I will note that we did receive a plethora of emails supporting various candidates. Only one of those actually asked for it to be made part of the public record. So everything we got was distributed to all of the council members and to Kelsey, our city clerk. And Kelsey, and if you're still on, to make sure we get that one noted for the record. I don't know if she was still, there she is.
Yes, so we received written public comments specific to this meeting from Bob and Pat Scadam regarding the council vacancy.
Okay, perfect. And I said, we received a lot of others, we went back through them multiple times to make sure all the council members got them. So thank you to the public, for everybody for writing in with all of those. So is there anybody here in chambers, let's make any comments, or anybody on Zoom? If you're on Zoom, just shoot Todd Henderson a message in the chat function. Let's give a quick pause here. Anybody on Zoom, Todd? All right, so hearing those citizen comments, we'll adjourn. We'll do maybe a five-minute break for everybody, and then we'll go into executive session. So we're actually gonna go into the conference room next door, since all the council members are in here. We'll start executive session at 9:15. Council, how long do you think you want for executive session?
Half hour.
Half hour.
Half hour.
Sorry, three minutes. Okay, all right, so we'll plan on starting executive session at 9:15, coming back at, or sooner, yeah.
No, you have to start, you have to start, you have to start the time you start, or say, you can't start at 9:40 if you was 9:45.
Yeah, so, so we can't, we can't come back in early.
Start back, because if someone leaves.
Yeah, so, so you wanna start with 15 minutes, and we can always extend it another 15.
I, I would venture to say you'll be fine at 9:45. They usually are longer than rather than shorter, so let's go with 9:45.
Okay, all right. All right, so we'll adjourn to executive session 9:15, come back at 9:45, which we will then obviously need a meeting extension, because we still have a lot of council business to do, so.
Fair enough.
Kelsey?
I'm there.
Technically have two minutes, so talk amongst yourselves. Yes, okay, I'm gonna do 10:30, and we can always get out early. So do we have, does somebody wanna make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:30?
Move the meeting to 10:30?
Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Kurtz, all in favor of extending the meeting to 10:30, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are officially extended to 10:30, we'll try to beat that. Okay, so I'll just add a couple seconds to Verizon time here. We are back from our executive session. So next on the agenda here is the appointment process. So how this goes is, I will ask for nominations from the floor. And then if someone will nominate somebody, ask for a second, and we'll do that until we are done with nominations. The person who is nominated first gets votes on, voted on first. If that person gets four votes, then we're done. And then, but if they don't, then we move to the next person, so. Sean will help keep us straight. How's that? So, okay, at this time, I will ask for nominations from the floor for our city council member appointment. Councilmember Cargill.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to nominate Jed Spencer.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Solberg for Jed Spencer. All right, do we have any other nominations? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Nominate.
Nominate, there we go, sorry. Nominate Mike Kennedy.
Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilmember Van Orman. All right, and do we have any other nominations? Councilmember Dunn.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Keith Cobleson.
Okay. We have a second from Councilmember Kurtz. All right, any other nominations going once, going twice? All right, so we have Jed Spencer nominated first, so we'll go ahead and take that vote. So just wanna go around the room.
Sure.
Okay, we'll just go ahead, go around the dais and take the votes from there. So Councilmember Cargill.
Can you clarify what we're doing here? So we're voting on the three.
Voting on, voting on the first candidate. We do candidate by candidate.
And we're just saying, yeah or nay. Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Kurtz. Yay. Councilmember Van Orman.
No.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem.
Name.
Councilmember Solberg.
Yay.
Councilmember Dunn.
Yay.
All right, one, two. All right, that made it easy. We have four votes for Councilmember, I'm sorry, new council member Jed Spencer. So congratulations. So stick around, obviously, we'll do the oath of office after the action items. And then I'll talk to you after the meeting about next steps and orientation and all that stuff. You guys, thanks for, to the other candidates for coming. We really appreciate the input and your involvement, and hopefully we'll see you all on the ballots in 2023. Okay, all right, moving on, we have a workshop on code amendment for personal services and limited use in the I-zone. And Amy is going to do the presentation. And we're gonna go through this really fast.
Yes. It is right there. All right. Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you, I'll try and make this.
You might wanna get closer to the mic.
I really.
We introduced Amy at a previous meeting, she's our senior planner.
She had her mask on, so it was hard.
Oh, that's right. And you're on Zoom. You're probably on Zoom for most of it.
Probably. Sorry about that, thank you. Nice to meet you in person.
All right, so good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present, sir. Well, I feel very special. So we're gonna talk about a development code amendment that we've been working on, next slide. So in March, the city received a private application to amend the city's development code to allow personal care services in the, as a limited use in the industrial zone. So that application, if it were to come to fruition, would result in two changes to our development code. One to the actual zoning matrix itself, and one to the list of limited uses that are allowed in the I-zone. I know I just said a whole bunch of planner stuff, and hopefully that will be more clear as we go through the presentation. Okay, so as I mentioned, we received a private application. It's actually kind of a companion project to a permitted building project we have in the industrial zone. The applicant applied for a building permit to build a bike service and repair shop with a retail component. And they also wanted to develop additional space for two additional tenants who were unidentified at the time of the building permit. As the building project progressed, the other two tenants were identified as a microbrewery with a tasting room and a barber shop. Now, the bike service and repair shop is an allowed use in the industrial zone, and the retail component is allowed as a limited use, because as long as it's within. And the retail component is allowed as a limited use because as long as it's within or abiding a permitted use. So the retail component is allowed as a limited use because the bike shop is permitted. Similar with the brewery and the tasting room. So the brewery, a microbrewery isn't allowed use in the industrial zone. So the tasting room is allowed as a limited use as long as it's within or abiding a permitted use. However, a barber shop is defined as a personal care service, which is currently not allowed in the industrial zone. So our code defines personal care services as barber and beauty shops, cosmetology and cosmetic salons, diet counseling centers, electrolysis and hair removal services, tanning and fingernail salons. So those would be what would be included.
Hey.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry, where exactly, you go back one slide, where exactly you're getting that information?
That's from the definition section of our code. It's like ten, one C, I think.
It's somewhere in the six hundred and eight-page document.
It's like, on the very first page, we go through a list of definitions.
And I get, so I guess my one and only question on this is since we're talking about it right now is when I, when I did my homework and I looked at what is professional care services, it's a, it's a huge arena of services. So to, to change this the, as we move forward, is it going to pertain to this policy document? And only this policy document and not what a personal care service is?
Correct, we will not be changing the definition of personal care services. Barber shops are just defined as a personal care service. It's one of the types that's defined as a personal care service, so that would be how we would be.
Per the city policy.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So our zoning code has essentially four categories of uses. There's permitted uses, which are just outright allowed in the underlying zone. There's limited uses, which are allowed as long as they comply with the under, the development standards of the zone, as well as some use-specific conditions that are put in there to help make sure that it's compatible with the surrounding developments. There's a conditional use, which is only allowed after a public hearing. And they usually come out with a pretty robust set of site and use-specific conditions and then not permitted, which are just outright prohibited in that underlying zone, which is where barber shops are. Okay, so it's, it's important to note, going back, that even though this is particular to an actual permit right now, this change applies to all properties that are zoned industrial and all uses that could be defined as personal care services. So it's not just this barber shop in this spot, it's all personal care services in all industrial zones. I just wanted to make sure that was really clear. So the second bullet there is essentially what the code language would look like. We add personal care services right in between general retail and restaurants without a drive-through. Currently, right now, in, for the industrials on there, eighteen limited uses and personal care services would be the nineteenth limited use. So this would be the change to the zoning matrix. As you can see down there at the bottom, it just changes that N to an L, so it allows it to be a limited use. So this is our zoning metric, or zoning map. And you can see that little arrow there at the top, that's the actual location of the building project. But again, this, this change would apply to everything that's in the kind of light purple mauve color. It would apply to all of the industrial zone. So the city has the city has a process for how we do, an annual process for how we do changes to our development code in our comp plan. The idea being that these changes to these documents should be considered for their cumulative impact versus kind of incremental changes that can slowly lead you down to unintended consequences. So you're supposed to consider them all together. The amendments can come from city councils, they can come from planning commission, they can come from staff, or they can come from private application. But all of the applications are due by April first. And then we review all the applications, we workshop them through the planning commission. But once we kind of get all the workshopping done, the deliberations and the approval process are grouped together so that everything's considered together. However, we are allowed to do something different. And in this case, staff chose to fast-track it, is the term that we've been using. Because this one was a private application. It's a relatively simple change to make. And there's a, there's an active project that's waiting on the result. So rather than wait, make the applicant wait until, you know, hopefully September, I think ideally. You know, we could get this done faster for them to help accommodate their project timeline. So there are several comp plan goals and policies that are relevant to this. I will not read all of these too. But I would do want to point out, land use policy number six directs us to protect designated industrial areas for ongoing and future use. Transportation policy twenty-five tells us, directs us to consolidate access to commercial and industrial development and encourage commercial and industrial centers rather than strip development. Economic Development Policy Four, continue to support startup retention, expansion and recruitment of businesses. And Economic Development Policy Five, provide consistent, fair and timely regulations that are flexible, responsive and effective. So this is just a recap of where we've been and how we got to where we are now. We did our workshop with the planning commission at their April meeting. We did, we did our public hearing with them on May eleventh. And the commission unanimously voted to recommend council, recommend council adopt this, this amendment. We are hoping, we have another meeting with them tomorrow and we're hoping to ratify that. And that recommendation will be included in your council packet for the twenty-first, which is when we're hoping to have the public hearing and the first reading of the adopting ordinance and then second reading on July fifth.
Any questions?
Can I ask one question, mayor? Amy, Todd, can you go back to, I think it's like the third or fourth slide that has the four different possibilities? Keep going, keep going. I think it's like two more back. Oh yeah, right here, thank you. So i- is there a reason why they chose, they chose, they chose limited, right?
Correct.
Instead of conditional?
The conditional use process is a lot more cumbersome. Like I say, it requires a public hearing and there's a lot more involved in it. The limited use, the part of the reason we went with the limited use is because as you, if you, hey Todd, can you go back? There's one. So when you look at how we're going to, how, where we would put it is between general retail and the restaurant. Those are also limited uses and they are essentially providing some buffers to make sure that the use is compatible, but it's not as big of a process, it's not as cumbersome, it's not going to have as many site-specific as much as just general use.
Okay.
So it's just less involved, it's less intensive.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Franny? All right, great, great job. And we'll see this come back at future meetings. Super. All right, we're on to general business, Mayor Pro Tim.
Perfect. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda item, May seventeen, twenty twenty-two, city council meeting minutes, and approve the June seventh, twenty twenty-two vouchers and may payroll benefits in the amount of seven hundred and ten thousand, three seventy-eight and eighty-three cents.
Second. Okay, that's a race, second by councilmember Cargill. Any questions? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six.
General Business eleven A, make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the grant agreement with Washington Department of Ecology to develop, to develop a stormwater master plan. Second.
We have a second by councilmember Solberg. All right, Lisa, you're up.
She's there. Yes, I'm here, sorry, my apology. So just to kind of recap the process, we applied for this grant application back in twenty twenty. It was approved in January of twenty twenty-one. And it's taken us a year and a half to get Ecology to issue the grant application. We're doing this project specifically because, based upon a population threshold in twenty twenty-four, the City of Liberty Lake is going to have to apply for an NPDES permit and, which is a national discharge permit. I'm, I'm not sure exactly the acronym, I've been using it for years and still don't know it. Long story short, is that this stormwater master plan is essential for us to basically create a database of all of our stormwater infrastructure and to evaluate areas where we may have capital improvement projects over the years. We do have two funds that we use for both aquifer protection and for stormwater planning that are, that, that we collect taxes on. And we need to develop a capital improvement program for that. All of this is tied up and wrapped into the need for us to implement, to apply for and receive this NPDES permit. Ecology is paying for the bulk of this. This has been in our capital facilities plan for three years now. And it's, they're doing the heavy lift. There's also, following this, there's a second application or a second action, yes, order for you to approve, action item for you to approve for parametrics to actually complete this stormwater master plan. So this is going to, there will be a little bit of impact on staff. We will get reimbursed from the stormwater grant for our costs associating with administering it. But most of the cost for this grant is actually going to be, or for the stormwater master plan, is going to be paid by the grant. And parametrics is going to have the heavy lift to complete that, obviously we'll manage it. So I stand for any questions.
Yes, I have one.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Lisa, are we working side by side with Liberty Lake Water and Sewer District with the stormwater? Are, do they have any thing to do with?
So we will, as part of the process, be engaging adjacent jurisdictions. And Liberty Lake Water and Sewer District also has a part of that process. Our stormwater is not being discharged into the sewer system, however. So if you're thinking there's a direct connection, there's not. However, Liberty Lake Water and Sewer District does have very much stake in the protection of the lake, obviously, as we've, that's, that's essential to their mission. And so they will be a stakeholder in the process.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, mayor. Lisa. All of our stormwater management currently is above ground, there's no below-ground capturing. It's all two-way ponds and that type of.
That is not exactly true. We actually do have, particularly in the older sections of the cities, we do have underground piping. And we do have drywells. And we, as the city, are responsible for all of the underground infrastructure. Generally speaking, when a development occurs, the HOA is responsible for the above-ground stormwater. However, the city is responsible for the underground infrastructure.
Okay, so I guess, I guess the purpose of the grant and the stormwater management plan is to identify how we can improve what we currently have or methods going forward.
So it's to create, so, so it's to create, first of all, a GIS database for the infrastructure that we own. And keeping in mind that much of the underground infrastructure was actually constructed before the city ever was incorporated. That's number one. Number two is to assess the situation, that, assess the condition of the existing infrastructure to assess the effectiveness of the stormwater and to identify problem areas where maintenance needs to be acquired. I mean, we're a twenty-year-old city. And as our, as our infrastructure ages, we're going to need to maintain that infrastructure. And we have no knowledge or limited knowledge at this point of the condition of the underground infrastructure. But we will at some point have to address that. Again, as part of the, part of this sets the table and basically enables us to then do the heavy lift of applying for this NPDES, it's a national permit that we're required to, based upon our population, apply for in twenty twenty-four. So that's, that's the other piece of it, is that it, it helps us with our understanding just kind of the the infrastructure that we have in our asset management, if you will. Most communities are that, and this is a long, I am going off on a tangent, but most communities that, that operate on an accrual basis. If you operate on an accrual basement, basis as a government, you're subject to Gatsby thirty-four, which is this whole infrastructure inventory process where you literally have to have it all GPSed in, in your GIS system. Because we operate on a cash basis, we've never had to do that. But as part of this NPDES permit, we will be required to do that specifically for stormwater. And we do not have that data at this point.
Okay, fair enough. The reason, my main reason for asking the questions previously on what page am I on here, on page seventy-four of three hundred and twelve of this agenda. It talks about scope of work task number four. And it talks about stormwater utility rate study. The recipient will conduct a utility rate study to access the financial needs to implement the stormwater management plan and provide a financial plan to update the existing utility tax. So I read that as, are we setting ourselves up for a future tax for this service grant by ecology?
We already have a tax in place. And it's, so it's for commercial, it's based on the amount of impervious surface on the parcel. For residential, I believe it's ten dollars per unit. The question is, is the current rate structure adequate to support the necessary maintenance over time? And we have been flying by the seat of our pants, if you will, in terms of maintaining the stormwater infrastructure. As we, as we grow up as a city, as we, we've exceeded the ten thousand population based upon actual census data, we are responsible for now providing that a higher level of information as it relates to the stormwater. And one of the things we need to know is that, again, and this is a national standard, but we've got to demonstrate that we're collecting enough revenues to maintain the system that's in place.
So the utility tax that we currently collect is through real estate taxes?
It's actually through the county property taxes, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Any questions, comments? All right. So we have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor of approving, oh, sorry, authorizing the mayor to execute the grant with the Department of Ecology, please say aye. Any opposed?
I didn't really see anything from you, mayor.
I'm sorry.
I, okay, it's like eyes have it.
I was looking at the next item.
That's okay, all right, get ahead, all right, motion passes six zero.
General Business eleven B, make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute parametrics task order two zero two two dash O two for preparation of a stormwater master plan.
Second. A second from councilmember Kurtz. Any questions, comments? I don't see any. All right, all in favor of authorizing the, or executing the parametrics task order in item eleven B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, eyes have it six zero.
General Business eleven C, make a motion to accept the fifty thousand dollar donation from the Rotary Club of Liberty Lake Centennial Foundation for Trailhead Clubhouse and authorize mayor to execute the associated memorandum of understanding.
Second, second from councilmember Cargill. All right, any discussion, questions? I had sent out an email with a little bit, with a summary of the changes. Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thank you very much, mayor. I was just gonna mention that I was, I was always in favor of this. I did want to see a little more information about it, which is why it was delayed. You know, the council members also wanted to see some more information. about it, which is why it was delayed. You know, the council members also wanted to see some more information on it. I have had a conversation with other council members about trying to take advantage of these type of things more often on other city facilities. So hopefully, we can have further discussion about that when the time comes.
Yep, sounds good. Any other comments or questions? Right, not hearing any. All in favor of approving the donation for Rotary and executing the MOU, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, eyes have it six zero. Public Works Building.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Darden Enterprises for the construction of the Public Works Building show with a pre-engineered mezzanine for a cost of $1,911,988 plus estimated sales tax in the amount of $170,167. Additionally, authorize staff to manage contingency and inspection fees in an amount not to exceed $191,199 for a total authorization not to exceed $2,273,354.
That is doubtful. Second by Councilmember Dunn. All right, questions? I'm sure there are some. Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you, Mayor. When I was looking through the agenda tonight, this was the thing I wanted to vote for the most because it's what we needed. But because of the action that we took earlier with essentially spending another 600,000 or getting ready to spend another 600,000 on Trailhead, to me, I can't vote for this tonight, even though I really, really wanted to be able to do that. I don't think with all of the outstanding items that we have and all the big projects that we're working on. I can't, on the one hand, allocate another 600,000 to one project and then another million essentially to this project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I tune in that camp, unfortunately, unless, of course, we can tap into the other funds that we are considering.
All right, does anybody want Kyle to go back through his presentation from before on the fund balances at all? No. All right, any other questions, comments? All right, not hearing any. All in favor. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Salberg.
Well, with all due respect, I don't think it has to be there. Or I think that the way that it was explained and the way that I understood it is that we can do both of these and not put the city or the citizens in liability. So I'm voting for it.
Thank you.
I also speak in favor of the position specifically compelling to me is that the city staff, our employees have been using the toilet in a outhouse for years. This to me has priority in an action. And further, I think the finance director presented an appropriate plan to deliver it.
Thank you. All right. All right, so, oh yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm still struggling with that it's a million dollars over what we budgeted. And it, it seems like it's been is, is, is the, the design has been completed, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I guess I feel like it's been so long since I've seen the design. I'd sure like to see it again, I guess. I just don't know how to get past the million dollars over budget. And I thought at our last discussion, we were looking for some creative ways to come up with the financing for this so we could move forward with it. But when I saw the presentation earlier, and I'm trying to recall what it exactly was now and how we pay for it. Is it just? Maybe Kyle refreshed my memory on how we're.
Yeah, absolutely. So going back through the potential scenarios to get us to the finish line for the Public Works Building. So we have, we still have a various amount of outcomes. And so the financing piece will be settled with a budget amendment that is put forth at a subsequent meeting based on council's direction tonight. And so what we'll do, we can allocate additional funds from the general fund reserves. If council so chooses, we can allocate ARPA funding. We can allocate additional, sorry, we can allocate additional refunds from our REIT one account. We can also, to your point, Mayor Pro Tim, we are, it's not too late for us to investigate additional avenues. I believe something that was mentioned at one of the previous meetings was the potential to increase our bond that's coming up to account for this. And so all those options are still on the table. I will give you guys the options based on your guys' direction tonight.
Well, the motion on the floor is to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement to build the building. Is that correct?
Yes. But not how to fund it tonight, right? But not the budget amendment tonight.
Correct.
You can, you can approve the contract, knowing what the amount will be, if you want to fund it various ways as the project is being built, because Kyle correctly have wrong, I don't believe it's payment all upfront.
Correct.
In a certain period of time, you can figure out different ways to fund it as you pay it as you go along. Whatever those timeframes are for the construction. So.
And there's still additional discussions that need to be had on that as well, so.
Right. Well, I feel like we need to know that before we can agree to a contract.
So, so Kyle, I think one, one piece that's missing here, you and I had talked about it, and it's kind of a little hard to understand for me sometimes as well. So this is being, you know, say we award it tonight, we may not even write any check until it might be a small check or two, but the most of it's going to be out a year. You know, we, we heard that there was an eight-year, eight-month lead time for the, for the building. But Kyle, you talked about how we have to identify the funds that's coming from now in 2022, even though it may not be paid until 2023. Did I say that correctly?
We want to recognize the funds.
Yeah.
And so that can be had at a subsequent meeting with all of our options still on the table. So council can at a subsequent meeting decide to allocate an additional 300,000 from the general fund. We can decide to allocate an additional 300,000 from our ARPA funds. We can increase any general obligation bond, an additional 300,000 to recognize the full amount of the contract in 2022, even though we know the majority of this project will likely not be completed until 2023.
And how far ahead are we right now on sales tax?
For the. A substantial amount. I hesitate to give you a percentage, but it is a substantial amount ahead than what we budgeted. And we will incorporate those increases into a budget amendment to reduce the burden as much as possible on any other outside sources of revenue.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
There's also a point to be considered that the bids were only good for 45 days. And the, the bid was opened on May 5th. So before the next council meeting, this bid will expire. And so we will be back at square one and costs are only increasing. So that's, that's the other piece of that, the equation.
Thank you. And Councilmember Kurtz had a question.
Not a question, but I, although in favor of this tonight, I think one, as Councilmember Dunn mentioned, the staff situation without having bathrooms and a porta potty. And also from an investment standpoint, we committed to this project a while ago, and I know that commitment doesn't happen until you write the checks and we put it in the budget. But this was one of our needs. We've invested in a lot of equipment that needs a place to be. And I don't want to waste or have our equipment be devalued because we didn't have a place for it. During the interviews tonight, there was several times mentioned a poor function of government. And I believe that this protecting our infrastructure and having a space for that to be really lines up with those, with that philosophy in particular. And so I, I know that the, we've talked a lot about the other things that we're working on and the money that we're spending, but we haven't committed those dollars yet. We haven't approved the final GMP yet. We aren't there yet. So I think that there's time between now and, well, sometime soon to figure out where the funding exactly is going to come from for this, because we also have those funding considerations and where those funds are going to come from for the other projects too. So I think if we start with one thing, some of that will shake out and we will figure out where the rest of it's going to come from as well.
And, and I'm going to put Derek a little on the spot. We talked earlier today. And I just want him to share with you a little bit of, you know, some of the, the other reasons why having this is so important. It's not it, you know, yes, there's no plumbing, there's no water, but there are many other reasons. Derek, would you mind kind of taking us through high level, some of the things that you guys are struggling with because you don't have a building to do them in?
Yeah, so right now we're in about a, I believe it's a 35 by eight-foot conics box. There's six of us in there. At some times, when we have new equipment that we're building, like we have a new post pounder, we're using the same table to build that on that we're actually eating our lunches on. So after we finish, we have to clean it up. Some of the other aspects are during the winter time, we have to change blades on our snowplows. And we're doing that usually in whatever, whatever temperatures are outside as well as whatever depth of snow. So like last year, we were, you know, 12, 16 inches of snow, trying to change bits and stuff like that. So it's it's definitely a struggle for us for the last few years trying to do that. So a shop would be a great asset for us to be able to take care of, take care of our equipment a little bit better and have a better rotation plan for maintenance.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Derek, I, I understand and I am with you 100%. And I, I agree completely with what Annie said. And this, as I mentioned in the last meeting, this to me is our, our top priority. But I keep going back to the other projects that not only are underway, but also that we're talking about. I mean, don't forget, we've got the driving range, but also don't forget that we're going to get a request here very, very soon for the library. And so, you know, I, I'm trying to put these in terms of priorities. This would be my number one priority. And I, I wish I could vote for it.
All right, any other questions, comments? Mayor Pro Tim?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Kyle, did I hear you said earlier, and I'll refresh my memory. What's our current cash on hand balance, right? That, I don't want to say it. I want to say this properly.
So any balance in the general fund?
Yes.
As of, as $5 million, as of the end of May.
And you estimated we were going to be closer to seven by the end of the year?
Yes.
After all the expenses are paid?
Correct.
For the year. And, and of this $2.2 million, the budget amendment would be for 1.1. We have the rest of the funds set aside for this project.
So.
Other than what we've already spent for design.
Correct. And so we have, so what the, what council will need to make a determination on is so REIT two, that capital fund in and of itself can accommodate all but 300,000, give or take, you know, about 10,000 of this project. And so the, the decision that we're going to lay before council is where that additional $300 is going to, $300,000 is going to come to get us to the finish line.
So you're saying that we have the REIT funds today less 300,000?
Correct.
In REIT, in REIT two, which is a different REIT fund than we're talking about for Trailhead.
Correct. So they, they can bleed for our purposes and for this conversation and what we have put forward, they are two separate funds.
Any other? Councilmember Kurtz, can I make a motion to extend the meeting till 10:45? Yes, we have a second to extend the meeting to. Second by Councilmember Dunn, anybody opposed? All right, not seeing any. We are extended to 10:45. All right, okay. Any further questions or comments on our public works? All right, not seeing any. We'll do this one actually by hand to make sure I get everything down correctly. So all in favor of executing the agreement with Darden Enterprises, please say aye and raise your hand. Let me get everybody, all right. Yep. All right, looks like motion passes for two with Council. Oh, so sorry, anybody's nay, sorry. Okay, great. Motion passes for two with Councilmembers Cargill and Van Orman dissenting. All right. Next one, this one hopefully will be an easy one.
Okay, General Business 11E, make a motion to authorize the mayor to approve the donation of the little library.
Don't jolt up at once for, we have a second from Councilmember Salberg. Any questions? Comments? Just grateful we see these things popping up all over the place, so.
And where is this little library?
I don't remember. Does it say in their packet? Trevor, do you remember where it is? Okay.
It's in the city.
Yes. I don't know if I printed that one. Shoot. I didn't. So we will advise. All right, all in favor of approving the donation of the little library, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. We are of note. Are there any further council comments?
One more, Mayor?
Yes.
It is going to be accessible on the city trail on Sprague Avenue.
Perfect. Yes, it is on the city side now that you say that. I remember talking about it. Okay, no, no, any more council comments? Okay, no public hearings or appeals, no resolutions. We have a second read ordinance, number 285. Kelsey.
Ordinance number 285 is an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending the comprehensive plan land use map and zoning designation for Meadowwood Technology Campus from I Light Industrial to M2 Community Center Mixed Use and authorizing a development agreement establishing additional development standards for the subject property.
Yeah, motion.
Second.
Oh, we need the motion first.
Make a, make a motion.
Out of order. Move to, except second read ordinance number 285.
All right, we have a first by Councilmember Dunn. Have a second from, second by Councilmember Van Orman. All right, questions, comments? This is, we talked about this in the workshops and did everything else, I think. I don't know if you guys don't have any more presentation. I did see the development agreement in there. It tackled a couple of conditions that you guys wanted. So if there's no comments or questions, go ahead and take a vote. Oh, public comment? Yes, thank you. Are there any, is there any public comment with regards to ordinance 285 adjusting the zoning for that property? I don't see anybody here in council. Is there anybody on Zoom?
They're all in bed.
All right. So not hearing or seeing any request for public comment, we'll go ahead and take a hand vote for ordinance 285. Those in favor of 285, please raise your right hand, say aye. I see seven. Anybody opposed?
We're just about.
I'm just, almost there. All right, motion passes six zero. All right, no emergency ordinances?
Multiple offices in there.
It's just way too late. Jed. We're, we're actually doing your oath of office, but kind of by Zoom. So Todd, if you can move Kelsey to the main screen, we'll have Jed up here at the, the microphone and he'll take his oath.
Where am I looking? She should be on the screen. Oh, is it Kelsey? Okay, hey, Kelsey.
Hey, so we'll do the oath of office. I will have a hard copy for you to sign. I'll get in contact with you when I'm back in the office. But if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Jed Spencer.
I Jed Spencer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And all local, excuse me, all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the Office of the City of Liberty Lake, Council Position Four.
Of the Office of the City of Liberty Lake, Council Position Four.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
We haven't done the gauntlet handshake in a long time. All right, welcome. Okay. All right, so do we have? Alright, so do we have any further citizen comments? Um, we do have upcoming agenda items, Kelsey. I kind of flip-flopped those. Sorry, Kelsey, you want to bring that up real quick?
Um, yes, one second here.
Yeah.
Okay, so coming up for June twenty-first, the Turn Lane Works, uh, Turn Lane Workshop. Um, and then July fifth, we've indicated, um, bringing the ARPA City Hall Expansion Conversation back. Um, and I'm open for anything that needs to be added on there.
Uh, Kyle, when were you planning on bringing the financial policy back?
Um, whenever we kind of had an opening, I know we had a lot of trailhead discussion and some other things that took precedence over that. I would like to get that in the future of the utility tax on our radar.
Yep. Okay, so maybe can we tentatively put those on for July fifth?
I think so, yeah. And so both of those, they're, um, I, I don't foresee them being um, real heavy lifts. It's more about we're pushing information out to, to council and the public uh, for them to, uh, maybe bring back, uh, further discussion at a later council meeting.
Okay, so we have financial policy and utility tax?
Yeah.
No, no, this, no, so. Kyle, I need to advise us on that.
Probably not till later.
Yeah. Usually, we usually try to group them all in one, a little bit later in the year. Okay, anybody else? Um, I guess still have a couple TBDs on there. Um, waiting on the school district still on the trail from the hub to, um, to Selkirk. Yes, I think those are still outstanding. So if you guys think of anything between now and the next, um, next week or so, uh, just let, let us know and we'll, um, see when we can get it on the list.
And I, I don't want to be too forward. I know Kelsey and Todd have been working with Granicus on getting the vote cast and getting our full implementation ready. Are we ready, Kelsey, to move on that?
Yes, I think we just need to identify a time that we could schedule an hour, hour and a half to do the training with the Granicus team. They would actually come out onsite and do the training in person at City Hall with us, so.
Yeah, Kelsey, can I talk about that? Yeah, it might be, it would probably be a separate meeting.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah. Lot of, lot of hands-on in person, making our way through, trying to learn how to do it. Alright, so, um, citizen comments? Sorry, I had skipped it, skipped ahead to that. Anybody here in council chambers? Nope, anybody on Zoom? One, two, three, nothing, Todd? Alright, so no executive session and I'll take a vote. Do we have a?
Motion.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Alright, we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. I hear, hear no objections, we are adjourned. Councilmember Spencer just made his first motion.